We can't hear you.
There we go. So these are the artists that we have had, I'm gonna try to get it aligned here a little better. The artwork that has been provided around the room has been provided by the following artists, so I'm just going to read off their names. It's amazing for those of you who are in person, you can see how really cool this art is. For those of you at home, you know, it's good, it would be great to stop up at the sixth floor of the Hicks Building and you can see it. It's almost like an art gallery up here, and it's some of the coolest stuff I've seen in a long time, certainly way cooler than I could do. So the names of our artists are Emma Agostie, Natalie Albert, Kaylee Artrock, Lacey Booton, Leah Corn, Quinn Ellis, Benjamin Ellison, Jack Ferny, Madeline Fontaine, Allison Free, Kayden Grassi, Sidney Holder, Tyler Hollenbeck, Seth Jensen, Lauren Moltany, Emily Painter, Justin Pavlov, Valentina Pierce, Joshua Pollard, Lily Shaw, Kylie Sodell, Dylan Stoffer, Mary Sullivan, Cassidy Winter, and Emily Utecheck. These are our artists, nice job guys, it's really beautiful. So thank you for doing them.
Thank you very much. Okay, at this time, approval agenda, we have a big budget item, so we will keep us as, I didn't entertain a motion to approve the January eighteenth minute.
You got Maria who took accept the January eighteenth minutes?
Totally all second.
Okay, are there any comments from the board members? Okay, we actually have everyone here, so we can actually not have to worry about the whole call vote. So all those in favor can say aye, you can abstain, or you can say nay. So, all those in favor for the approval of the January eighteenth minutes, as is, please say aye. I believe that was everybody, so it is unanimous that they are approved as is. Okay, let's move on to public participation, Dr. Willett, if you could please put the two-minute timer up.
The screen is gonna bump around.
But that's okay. In the meantime, while Dr. Willett looks for the two-minute timer, if you could please raise your hand if you are online, if you are in the room, if you stand up to this, it will pick you up. I just asked that you guys raise your hands, we can go from the room to the internet and back and forth. What's called upon, please list your name and your address for the and then we'll go from there, so. Let me get all this going, okay, so I see online that we have a person back, so she go ahead, Dr. Willett will give you the two minutes, and you're all set.
Hi, my name is Beth Pacico, my address is forty-one Wonderview Drive, obviously Tallent. And I just wanted to know how long it takes to get a sport funded at Tallent High School. My daughter is a junior, and she's been on the gymnastics team for the last three years. And it was a team one year prior to that, so we're in our fourth year. And I have to completely self-fund for her to do high school gymnastics, in addition to my other daughter doing two sports. So for the last three years, I've had to pay over two thousand dollars for my two kids to represent Tallent High School in athletics. And I was just wondering how we get money in the budget for gymnastics. Obviously, I'd love to be able to only have to pay the two hundred dollars pay-to-play fee. None of that money that I pay, you know, over the sixteen hundred goes towards a family cap, and I just find that incredibly frustrating when I see other high schools that have, you know, home leotards, away leotards, I mean, we don't get buses, we don't get anything, so I know everybody's trying to cut the budget, but I'd really like someone to take into consideration that, you know, there's a sport at this high school that not many people know exists. And I'm paying through the nose. I'm done.
Yeah, thank you very much. I will let anyone in the room if they would like to speak in there. Go right now, yeah, come on up. And like I said, yeah, that's fine, you can just list your name and your address, Dr. Willett will give you two minutes. And this just picks you up automatically, so you don't even have to worry about it, and thank you so much for speaking. Go ahead.
Hello, I'm Drew Doyle, I live at Eight Lake Drive Extension, and I'm a tenth grader who extends attends Tallent High School, and I'm part of the Business Pathway. I've already had three business classes in my young high school career, and all of them had at least twenty-two people in them, and two of them were completely full with twenty, within having no empty seats. Additionally, I've had a good number of people ask me what the business pathway is like as they were interested in joining and had enjoyed some wonderful business classes that our school had to offer and want to join the pathway and want to talk to me about to see what it was like. All this has me worried that if you decide to cut business teacher positions, students like me would not be able to take the business courses that were prepared for the real. Also, when me and my friends talk about classes we want to take, it always ends up being business classes and a class that gives you free food. If you know anything about high schools, that we really like food, so it wouldn't really make sense to me to limit the number of classes that are, have that high level of demand, thank you for your time.
Thank you so much for talking. I love that. Thank you so much, I love hearing from our students, and we did definitely get correspondence yet, but we had a few written, so I love the activities going back and forth. Karen online.
Hi, thanks, Ashley, can you guys hear me okay?
Yes, go ahead.
Okay, thanks, sorry. Karen Moran fifty Merlot Way. I'm advocating tonight for a school budget that keeps our district whole. We may have differing opinions about what that looks like. But please remember that our schools are one of, if not the biggest asset in our community. Every adult in our school buildings is an opportunity for our students to learn, an opportunity to connect, an opportunity to engage and interact, whether in the classroom, library, gym, playground, or hallway. Eliminating staff means less adults in front of children. We have made great strides in recovering from past cuts as well as a pandemic, but please don't send us backwards. It will have years and years of detrimental effects. Also, in regards to our library staff, let's please call them by their rightful earned title, library media specialists. They do a lot more than just check out books for kids. When we lose staff, any staff, we also lose the years of investment in them, training, professional development, and what they have done for our district as a whole. Thank you for all your hard work and your service to Tallent. Thanks.
Thank you, Karen. I would invite anyone in the room to speak at this time. Come on up.
Hi, I'm Shay Belair, one eighty-five Cozy Road. I have two kids in high school right now, a freshman and a junior, I'm a teacher at Tallent Middle School at seventh grade. And I had my notes, but my phone broke down, so bear with me. But I am, I am here today to advocate for keeping as much staff, keeping as much programs as you possibly can, I implore you to consider that. I want to echo a lot of what Karen said, you lose staff, you lose programs, you lose support for the kids that need it the most. You and also just, you know, we're still recovering from the pandemic, we're still seeing the effects on our kids in the pandemic, so I implore you to consider that as well. As far as the proposed cuts I've seen, as it affects me as a parent, I'm concerned about the library media specialists, number one. My junior is going into a senior year, that library media specialist in the high school is his advisor. Going into his high school senior year, he's gonna now have a brand-new advisor that does not know him like his current advisor. So this is just one example of how that cut impacts a child in Tallent, in Tallent Public Schools. So I just really implore you to consider everything that is involved with these cuts, the impacts that you see and you can't see. So just do as best as you can to keep everything you possibly can, and thank you for your time.
Thank you. So at this time, we will go to Liz Costa.
Hi, everyone, Liz Costa fifty-four, Josiah Lane, thank you for allowing me to speak tonight, I'm here to express my unwavering support for our education system and the individuals who make it possible. I've had the pleasure of witnessing the incredible impact that our dedicated teachers, librarians, guidance counselors, business teachers, rope teachers, and courses designed to support both the middle school and high school students have had on the students of Tallent. These individuals and the programs have been essential in fostering a safe and supportive environment for our students to grow and learn. The thought of eliminating these important positions in the programs is heartbreaking. They are not just mere titles, but rather they are the backbone of our education system. Our librarians, excuse me, have been instrumental in promoting literacy, providing access to essential resources while our guidance counselors have been a source of comfort and support for our students as they navigate these challenging years of middle school. Let us not forget about the success of the Business Academy and the crucial role our business teachers have played in its success. I understand that this, the difficult decisions need to be made in regard to budgeting, but implore you to consider the long-term impact that these cuts would have on our students. As the saying goes, they say you don't know what you have until it's gone, truth is, we knew what we had, we just never thought it would be gone. Let us not regret our decisions today and deprive our students of the resources they need to succeed. It is a time when our students need support more than ever. I ask you to make the difficult but necessary decision to invest in Tallent Public Schools. Our students deserve nothing less. The value of the human connection and the empathy cannot be replicated by eliminating them. I would just leave you by saying, what's next, replacing our teachers with ChatGPT? Thank you.
Thank you, Liz. I will, once you end, open the floor up for anyone.
Thank you. Patrick Doyle, Eight Lake Drive Extension. I'm asking the Board of Education to adopt the full budget proposed by the superintendent, which would increase the current budget by less than six percent. As residents, families, grant makers, and state lawmakers consider this investment, it's important to put this increase in context. According to the Bureau of Labor Statistics, inflation rose by six point five percent in twenty twenty-two and seven percent the year prior. Even prior to these high inflation rates, the education budget in college has not kept pace with inflation. The results have been cuts to vital services, equipment, and staffing, and I've seen the negative impacts, both the education offered to students and the reputation of the Tallent community. In his budget documents, the superintendent reported an additional thirty-eight positions have been requested to meet the needs of the school district. Not only did his budget not include any of those positions, they cut more than seven full-time equivalents in addition. That suggests running the school system as optimal as it could be would require an additional forty-five positions, not even proposed. In essence, they've already been cut to be more fiscally responsible. When I look at some of the items that have been proposed for a cut, I'm alarmed, seeing the possibility of a business teacher from the high school meant a lot, as you heard from my son, such a reduction would both increase already large class sizes in a meaningful program and limit offerings to students. While partial to this line item, I believe it's representative of other cuts offered. It illustrates to me that any cut to the superintendent-proposed budget will diminish the value of every dollar the town invests in our school system. I would like to pause for a moment to thank the Tallent School staff. They bear the brunt of these tight times in many ways, and I have seen how dedicated they are to serving students of this school district with excellence. Should be grateful for their knowledge and parts, and for the sake of students, we should not add any more to their strength.
One, two minutes.
My statement is that the right school system any cut would collapse. The full budget. And stay behind it after it goes through the process.
Hi, everybody, Kate Howard Bender, one oh three.
One minute, we're having
Oh, sorry.
All right, it is a time where I lost that. Okay, Kate, go ahead.
Kate Howard Bender, one oh three Goose Lane, I have two points that I'd like to just offer for your consideration and a question. My first point is, I would ask you to consider the fact that the quality of education has deteriorated based on the fact that there are fewer programs and fewer opportunities for my children since we moved here in twenty fourteen. This is a common refrain that I've heard from friends and other parents in town, and I would just ask that you that you adopt the full budget that Dr. Willett proposed, that's my first point. My second point is, two members of the Board of Education, Jacob and Jayden, you were able to bear, you know, to enjoy the fruits of Tallent Public Schools. And so I would invite you to specifically and especially consider that, you know, passing on what, what is, you know, like our community heritage. Are Tallent schools good? Yes, they are, and let's keep them that way by fully funding them. So that, that is my second point, and my third thing that I wanted to ask, and this is a pointed question that I asked folks, I did not hear back from anybody with an answer with, and that's okay, because I know y'all are, y'all are busy. But I would like to know how much was saved when the Board of Education went out to bid for the transportation contract. So comparatively between when you got the first student renewal and to when we went out to bid as a town. So I'd like to know the savings that this board brought to the budget. So thank you all for your work, I know it's hard work very well. And please fight for our kids and our community. Investment will make our town, will continue to make our town great, be well.
Thank you, Kate. Restarted. I will open the floor up in the room again. Okay, seeing none, if there are any other viewers at home, you want to raise your hand, please do so now, because I will close out the public participation portion for a moment. So going once in the room as well, if anyone would like to speak, going twice. Okay, I will close out the public participation, and we will jump into correspondence.
Okay, so this is a business correspondence period. So I won't, I'm not gonna read this for every email, I will hear the summary of what we received, so. We received one email inquiring about lunch mandate and one email discussing the Special Education Advisory Council. We received a bit of a presentation on a class meeting. And then we received twenty-one emails relating to the Board of Education budget. One thanking the Board of Ed for transparency on how the Q and A document is set up this year. And then the rest, asking not to cut the budget, specifically the librarian positions. Just mentioned about half of those emails roughly, for a total of twenty-three emails.
Okay, so points of information, I will open this up to board members at this time. If there's any comments or anything that you would like to speak about, do so.
I just wanted to maybe ask Dr. Willett about Ms. Pacico's question about funding sports. Dr. Willett, I think I had asked a question in the budget about the ten thousand dollars. That was specifically for these one- and two-person kind of teams, wasn't it, or just funding that is above the two hundred dollar pay-to-play? Is it, does her situation, I guess is my question, fall under that budgeted amount?
It could, I think, when, when the budget passes, we'll have a better idea of how we want to do that, but it could be that people that are in free and reduced lunch status would get additional if they're reduced, or people that had something above and beyond that that might be struggling, would have an element removed of their their pay-to-play. Because right now, free and reduced lunch covers a certain group of people, but there's a group just outside of that, I think the program is Alice that kind of talks about how there's this other group, it's actually, you know, that line where they get cut off is a fairly thin line, there's a lot of people on the other side of that F R L line that are struggling a lot. And so this was meant to, I think, provide support for the individuals that might be on the other side of that line, but not necessarily get the benefit of the F R L. I did talk to Ms. Pacico, I understand exactly what she's concerned about. You have teams that are part of the sports in Tallent, and then there's teams that are kind of organized as a cooperative. So the cooperative, you know, students in these other teams, the cost of play for those students can be seven times the amount of the cost of play for some of the other sports, which is why sports districts don't necessarily have teams of these kinds, they might have to go in on a co-op team or something like that. The co-op team that we belong to has a lot more of the authority over how that particular sport goes, even to some extent with the funding. So we could do a whole F S C on sort of the outside of the typical, you know, it's not typical, outside typical, it's a great sport. So is hockey, but these sports are not, they're, they're cooperative sports with other districts, they're not a singularly tall and sport. So that would be a good F S C, because we could really get into the granular sonnet, but they do tend to cost for individual students because of the number participating, and because of the cost associated with the sports, sometimes they're much more per student. So the board could make a decision to take that on, but that would be a decision you'd have to make at some point to fund those, and it would be a conversation that probably should start.
Okay, I'll put it on my teacher list.
I did see that Alice was, they just received a grant through the Greater Herbert Foundation just recently.
We did, we were working in cooperation with them, there's a ceremony tomorrow night, which, once we get it all, you know, solidified, I was gonna bring it to you, but it's a great opportunity for us to help people just outside of that F R L range. So tomorrow night, we get that finalized, and then I'll bring it to you in the future.
Yeah, I just, I wanted to address the correspondence about the lunch mandate. I've been asked a lot about it privately, so I thought that I would address it publicly. I have not had any private or as a board had conversations with Representative Nuccio or Senator Gordon about that particular mandate. And furthermore, I would not ask for that mandate to be revoked. And I support our teacher.
Yeah, I mean, I don't know, we we were supposed to have Nuccio and Gordon come, and then we had to cancel the meeting. But Gordon did show up, and Nuccio was not able to, so we only had a board interaction with Gordon, and we did not speak about the lunch mandate, that was not a topic of discussion. But what was, was the ECS funding, and that is happening at the Senate now, what is it, the state? Because that was happening last week, and I was totally out of it, that there was no way I could have gotten something written, but I don't know if our board as a whole want to come together and support the new calculations for ECS funding, I know our boards have done stuff, I don't know if that's a communications thing, or a full board, but that is a topic of conversation. Because that is something that we did talk to Gordon when he was here. So throwing that out there.
I would be happy to take it up in communications and present something to the board, if that's what you guys would like.
Did we all get that email from the Ellington Chair? Okay, Sophia. That's an idea.
That would be a good idea. So we wanted to throw that out there, so. Take it on. Thank you. Go ahead.
I just like to reiterate, Jen, sorry, because again, the mandate has been quite a big topic of conversation. And I would also like to reiterate that I didn't have any correspondence with Mr. Nuccio and Mr. Gordon in regards to the specific mandate, nor am I, and support it. I know that there have been some correspondence out there that it's something that we requested, or the boards requested in that mixture, so I wanted to make sure that was clear. Yes, I really, I can't delegate that to you, but I would really like as a board member for your, for communications to do that, because I think it would be a good opportunity for us to come and get a resonant board on that specific topic, and yes, we did receive the Ellington, so that was excellent correspondence. And I do want to thank all the folks who have written in as well as who continue to write in and be involved with the Board of Education and the Town Council, and all of our other boards and commissions. I think it's very important, I know a lot of people get very involved during budget season, because it's, it's super important, and I know that there's several people online, some people here in the room, and different correspondents and folks that aren't here that stay involved throughout the entire process, so whether it's budget season or a random day in October, thank you for staying involved. I think it's paramount that our community speaks loud for what they want for, you know, their, whether they have students in the Tallent Public School system, whether their students have graduated and moved on, whether they're, you know, they're newer to town or been in town for thirty, forty, fifty years, everybody's voice is very important. And now is your time to continue to communicate that, please. I, I hear you. And we need to continue that correspondence in order for us to make the proper decision, and as Jen said, I support our students, I just support our staff, and I support our school system. And I support Tallent as a whole community, so hopefully we'll be able to report that, and have the budget. That's what I have, and young man, you spoke eloquently, so thank you for speaking, and I hope that we can continue this business path for you.
Thank you, Ash.
I wasn't gonna say anything, but the mandate thing, I remember when this mandate passed, and we had no idea that it was passing, and it was a big deal. I remember it being like, I sent an email, you can play it if you want. What do you mean, we're not giving our teachers a thirty-minute lunch break? And there was pushback, and there was complicated reasons as to why it hurt school districts and it hurt students with learning time. So that's kind of where I stand in that, I can't rally behind unfunded mandate number three hundred and eighty-two, I just can't. But I would love for our teachers to have a thirty-minute lunch break, if we can just extend this school day five minutes, by all means. But it seemed more complicated than that.
You want else at this time?
I was gonna say, as far as the mandate goes, I, I don't recall us talking about it, or even it being presented to us, and it's possible I missed it. But the first I heard of it was on social media, actually, so no, I didn't have any conversations with anyone about it, and I, of course, support our teachers and our students as well.
Did you want to add anything about the
Not unless you want me to, I could go on for a long time, or you have a budget?
You get a two-minute timer.
I think this particular topic, frankly, I think is a distraction from the other things we need to work on right now.
Okay.
I support thirty-minute lunches for teachers, I don't support the way that one just said you did that, and now let's talk about the board.
Okay.
You know.
Fair enough.
I think the way Dr. Willett just put it is rather perfect, I think it'd be wise of this board to support our teachers. And that's sort of a limit there. One of the residents that spoke during public participation, also, I want to commend you as well, because I don't, I don't know how old you are, I think you said you were a junior sophomore. I wouldn't have had myself up in this room speaking to everybody at this, at this table, so I want to thank you, and I want to commend you for doing that. As someone who did that, did all these things to try to prepare me for these types of things, you did a pretty darn good job explaining why we need to save some, so, well done to you. And then somebody mentioned it in public participation, I can't remember, I can't remember who. You know, Jacob and I, we come from Tallent schools, and some of you might have as well, and so I don't want to just limit this to just Jacob and I, we're just the most recent of just the most recent of graduates, at least on this board, and I'll keep it short and saying, again, without And I'll keep it short and saying, again, without talent public schools. I'm again, I I I am not the same kid. And so without getting too much into detail, I I tonight I will be advocating for the health of our public school system. And that's where I leave it. We are advocating for our kids, you're advocating for your kids, staff, families, everybody included in this. And so this is not just a, you know, one sided argument. This is about what we are here to do. And to me, since I got elected, that was support and defend the health of our public school system. And so to everybody listening in to this board specifically, that is what I'll be doing tonight. So thank you.
Anyone else at this time? No? Okay. Well, we do not have our student representatives tonight. They are going on the Quebec trip, so I wish them well and I hope they have a blast. And I'm sure they will have a full report for us at our next meeting. So let's go ahead and jump on into the monthly financial.
All right, so as is the case beginning of the month, we do the monthly financial report, seven months into the budget at this point. We do have a negative balance of one hundred and twenty-six thousand, seven hundred and seventy dollars or point three percent of the budget at this time. That's mainly due to our overages in special education. You're looking right now, the end of year, even with excess costs, payments coming in in February and May, we have the possibility of a deficit of four, four hundred to six hundred thousand dollars. It's about a one point three million dollar situation for special ed reimbursement is about, we're lucky. You know, nine hundred thousand dollar range, that would be impressive. So we do have a situation that we're going to have to be careful carefully at. We are, as a result, we are freezing the budget. Some things we can't freeze outright because you have to, obviously, things have to be moving, that's have to be going. But as of Friday, we're doing a full district freeze on all of the budgets, so we can watch this carefully as we get into the end of the year. But it does speak to the issue at hand, which is, you know, we have to be watching carefully these special education situations. We get to the remainder of this year and it is a budget factor in next year too. So that's the single biggest thing. I can go kind of a line by line if you want a little more detail about a minute or two. So salaries, code one ten are under budget by two sixty-seven. This will obviously go down as we go through the remainder of the year and continue to do our hiring and so on.
Excuse me, Dr. Will, can you put it up here? I forgot to print a copy.
Okay.
You're just not sharing that screen.
Yeah, I'm sorry. Actually. Yeah, it's in the packet. We'll just get to it. It's not that helpful. You can kind of blow it up at home a little bit.
Thank you.
Yeah. Substitutes, substitutes hundred and sixty K went down almost forty thousand last month. So that's going to be, we now fairly quickly, quickly, ran to the year overtime or under by one six. Stipends are currently under eighty-six, but like normally this year, okay to play. Watch that as it kind of goes out to the end. The winter sports are ending, spring sports are starting. All of that will affect it. And some of the bigger sports in the spring with a lot of the kids attending, so we'll see how that goes. Health insurance severance, employee benefit code one ninety, two hundred, two ten. Collectively, ten thousand under budget anticipated that the admin T A severance were encumbered in December. So that's ninety. Newly hired employees and retired employees typically drive the FICA med social security numbers code two twenty newly hired employees. And those who retired since the beginning of the year can immediately change the available balances. So you see that bump around there. Apparently it's under by sixty-one. Retirement, course reimbursement, unemployment are collectively under. Not all course reimbursements have been filed. We just did have one that did affect our lines for next year. You saw that, that one of those can make a difference of five or ten thousand by itself. So that does have a tendency to swing it around a bit. Available balance is forty-eight under, but twenty-six was encumbered for unemployment. Benefits consultant and workers' cop balances are over budget by two thousand. Fifty thousand was encumbered during the month of November on the benefits consultant line. We also paid in January twenty twenty-three our portion of the O F B L report. Professional education services is over by fifty-seven thousand. It's an increase of twelve thousand from last month. Special education needs are driving this line. The balance will key continue to increase. And as you can see, some of our unders are going to be absorbed pretty quickly by some of the overs and the special ed over tends to be a pretty big one. We have really no control over that piece of it, so it's something we have to just watch carefully. Legal audit tech is three forty, three fifty under as at this point in time through December. But we'll be, you know, continuing to eat those up and we are going to start negotiations with the paras very shortly. And we're going to actually start again with the teachers before the year is completely out, so that that will hit that. Our repair, maintenance, custodial, cleaning, equipment, technical, or twenty-four thirty will continue to be spent as the year goes on. Currently, it's under, it's down by twenty-seven thousand from last month. Maintenance and custodial expenses are cyclical. They're usually not fully incurred till the end of the year. Transportation is significantly over. And so you can see a lot of the unders are eaten up very, you know, this is a big over, a third, three forty-nine. And this has to do with, yeah, basically the transportation for students, exceptionalities that we need to, you know, manage those. The second and final excess cost payment doesn't come in May. So we'll we'll get this balanced out a little bit more, but you know, this is going to look big for a while. And even if it does bounce out with the larger chunk we're getting in February, you know, you'll see it run down. So that's why we're doing the freeze. Tuitions are over by almost a million. Average outplacement is about ninety-seven thousand. So, you know, just have some, you know, needs and had to address them. So that budget is close to a million over. The available balance will change, of course, as we go through the year. Kids can move in, kids can move out, but I wouldn't expect that to dramatically change. So between that and the transportation, you can see where I'm getting that one point two to one point three million dollar number. And our access cost payments are generally in seven hundred to nine hundred range, nine hundred being a miracle year kind of thing or a very, very good. Energy code six twenty expenses are transferred to the universe U I S F U S I fund. And that usually happens way before the, you know, all of this. So it happens in the beginning, as you're aware. Textbooks under by fifty-five, they're still deciding on some of those materials. This is the kind of thing that's frozen, though. Critical coordinators, you know, are continuing to do their work, but they know we don't have movement by Friday. That's it. That kind of money moves back into a frozen status until we're sure we can, you know, where we are on some of the other items that I've talked about. Instructional supplies, obviously, we have to keep expanding on those. They're down forty-five thousand dollars in a month, so you can tell that in forty-five or fifty thousand dollar chunks, that gets eaten up pretty quickly. But we're going to, you know, carefully lock up everything we can so that we can make sure that we're in, you know, we're in a balanced status as we get to the end of the year. So obviously, the big concern right now is just making sure that we mitigate the special education cost.
Thank you for that. Any more members have any questions?
They're just to clarify, Dr. Will, this spending increase will be put in place or it is currently?
As of Friday, the freeze starts. So I usually give people a little time to, you know, if they've spent nine months, they're going to whatever, six months researching something. They're finally ready to go. It depends on how much it is, but I give them a heads up. You know, either you you do it by this date or, you know, we're freezing everything. So that was the notice that I gave to the cost center pupil. To everybody who controls budget.
Gotcha, okay.
So that basically everyone who controls the budget has been told that, you know, if there was something you've been researching, like a textbook or whatever, if you don't execute it by Friday, that money is broke. So don't come to me, you know, can't come to me Monday with, we're ready to go. I'll say nope. Because we have to watch how this is going to play out to the end of the year.
Some more questions about the student transportation services, three forty-nine. Can we look forward to continuing to see that that be over for the remainder of the year and then going into next year with our with our new bid and contracts?
It will be one of the bigger bigger costs for the district.
So can you speak to a little bit what's driving that three forty-nine?
Yeah. Well, let's say that I moved into Tallent in Walton. I had an exceptional, you know, that was discovered and or came with one. And that I needed to be served in a specialized program. Colin is responsible for the transportation to that specialized program. And that transportation is expensive. You know, so transportation can be ten thousand, thirty thousand. If you have an expulsion, transportation is three hundred and twenty-five dollars a day unless you can make a special agreement with, you know, family to 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 compensate them to do it. So that's an example, you know, it's it's a very expensive thing for districts. Special education in general, probably statewide, needs some reform. They need to fully fund their four, you know, the amount that was promised to districts. They don't do that. So a district like Tallent gets hit pretty hard with things like that. There's not a lot of options for, you know, to to do it another way. So it's, you know, we either have agreements with people or or we have, you know, obliged to make sure we transport them through like first or company. So you pay, that's a significant amount of pay.
So that's, so we pay for the transportation services, whether well as other services when they're out. So that drives that.
And an expulsion is outplacement and other things are, you know, what we call out placements can take a variety of out placements, a broad term. It's generally anyone who's getting services through a program that is not you. And even even, yeah.
I think the reason why I'm asking this question, I think, because it's misconstrued is that that people see the empty buses or buses that are seem to be empty in their minds because there's a couple of students maybe that have been on the run. But making sure that we have, you know, a seat for every student, making sure, I mean, they're hitting every square mile, but not this line isn't just hitting every square mile and driving to Birchgrove, T I S, T M S and T H S. They're going to, or they're going to the different places. So I just want us to be cognizant because as we're talking about salaries and we're talking about those things, there's ways to mitigate that and streamline that by keeping our students. I know that there's some things that we can't control, right? But there's opportunity to keep our students in house with our educators. That's that's kind of where I'm just didn't know if that was a big driver of that number.
Yeah, well, and we do have, we have excellent programs that help make sure that students are educated with their peers. The best educational and social environment for them. Those programs are our lead programs or A P programs or T T A program. You know, we didn't have those programs. I look at those in two ways. The first way is that that is our obligation to the students at Talons, to make sure that those students and families get the best possible program we can give them. It also is a cost avoidance type of funds, funding method for us because there are twenty-six students in Lee, for instance, if even ten of those individuals would have otherwise been outplaced at an average of ninety-seven thousand per outplacement, looking at nine hundred thousand. So it's it's that kind of thing, you know? Even if you take a conservative number, you know, sixty thousand, which is not that six hundred thousand to ten. So, you know, there's twenty-six, so, you know, and the cost program is less than that. So, you know, those are things that Talon does a good job of serving its student body, serving its family and the community. But it also is doing a good job making sure that there are some programs so that the districts not, doesn't have the only alternative as an outpatient program. That's definite, but it is most of the time not even as good as we could provide here. The students that are outplaced, it's clearly the programming that we cannot. So in the, I think the most expensive outplacement I've seen is two hundred something thousand. And then they range to the two hundred eleven, one forty-six, you know, that type of thing, all the way through to just above our excess costs. Our threshold and then below it. Our threshold now is eighty-seven thousand. We don't get reimbursed if there's expense up to eighty-seven and incur the whole thing past eighty-seven, you start getting. So it's it's a, it's a, it is a difficult issue for Holland and and other places too. The state of Connecticut, you know, my opinion needs to spend some time on this particular issue for all everyone's benefit, you know?
Any other board members with questions before we move on to the budget? Okay, let's jump on in.
So if you if you'd like, I can do just a basic overview of the basic differences. And maybe so where we left it in the document that's been posted online, I wonder if I can just pull it up. You can find this at home at the, on the board's school district site. Sorry, this is bad combination of not very good eyes and really small. So on the school district site, on the budget link, with a three hundred bot modem. See, the engineer got it. When you finally get to the budget page, you can see at the top, there's the budget calendar, Board of Education reduction, the super budget, you know, various other things. Your own report and that kind of thing. Tonight, the board is talking about the Board of Ed budget. The document they're looking at is released once the board either approves or asks for some changes. So that's why that's not up here yet. The board has access to it. The public doesn't until the board actually adopts it, then the public gets it. At this point, what is out there from the last discussion on two one, what are the considerations that the board had last deliberated on? And so really, there were three options. The one that you have in front of you as a document tonight represents the five point oh five, because that's where it seemed like it landed. But that, the three options that were discussed and some of it was mentioned tonight. Superintendent's proposed budget. Now, the thing is, it goes up a little bit because you've got some of these out on. So I would do some final calculations, but that's about where you're at, somewhere in the five nine seven. Five oh five is with the orange and the ads. You can notice that the budget that the board talked about mainly on February first did not include a reduction of the libraries, anything in white states. It's just the stuff in orange that went. So the board deliberated and the five oh five does not include a reduction of librarians. It does not include a reduction of the business teacher. So that's, that's that. The four five eight is all of the previous superintendent proposed budget reductions, all of the orange. And it includes the team and grade leader positions, curriculum liaisons, et cetera. That's what the four five eight was. Everything altogether, I think, was a three point five, I can't, three six nine, right? It was a three six nine if everything on this list went. So that's where the board was as of February first. These options were superintendent's proposed budget, in which case I make some small adjustments and that document becomes the Board of Ed adopted budget and I hand it to the town manager. Or the five point oh five, which is the document you're holding in your hands. Or you ask to remove the, the team leader, grade leader, curriculum liaisons, which brings it down to four five eight. That was where I perceived you to leave this on February first. And so that narrative talks about that. This is posted publicly so everybody could see, you know, what was being, what it, where it had landed. But again, it does not include the math positions. It does not, meaning your reduction of five oh five keeps in place the math teachers, the counselor, the robe, business teacher, the librarian. Keeps in place the math teachers, the counselor, the robe, business teacher, the librarian. Um, the production in your five O five budget. Is basically everything in this narrative. On the Board of Ed, um, possible budget for adoption that's in front of you today. So, um, it's everything that was in the superintendent's proposed budget plus the custodian and the items in orange previously, right? So it's basically adding a reduction of the custodian plus the, the ads minus the. You know, the literacy lexia piece, the nurses, the custodian, things like that. Um, one thing to just look at, I adjusted the numbers to reflect the four five, five point O five. The, um, difference in budget is. Two million, one hundred and nine thousand, six hundred and fifty-two. That's a five point O five percent increase. One million, one hundred and three. That one point two of that is basically ninety-nine point six nine percent of the entire increase. So these items now represent almost a hundred percent of the increase, which means everybody, everywhere else that was reduced is a step. And that, that ninety-nine point six nine percent is already taking two hundred thousand out of the E R F to offset. The transportation number. So actually, without that special at offset of two hundred thousand. Your, your increase is less than your cost drivers together. So you, you are working hard at trying to provide the best outcome during an extremely difficult year. I just wanted to highlight for you, that's your budget, your budget position is without using the E R F for special ed. Your increase, you know, cost drivers are more than your increase. These ten items are more than your entire increase. For the whole budget itself. So that's where you had left it is. You know, one of those options.
At this time, I will open up to more members for discussion. Silence.
Good question.
Yeah.
I'm, I'm still focused on the insurance line. So I didn't see the financial statements of the ins and outs of the fund, but I'm just curious, this one point two million dollars. How much of it is going to replace reserves that were spent on the surgeries or?
Well, seven hundred sixty-six is coming out. It's, none of it's going to the reserve. We're, we're taking from the reserve.
So we took from the reserve. Don't we have to replace, like mitigate for that loss from last year? So what are we putting back in?
Well, we're, we're putting that in based on trend, you know, um. Every month you make a contribution to it based on the trend. So we're not, we're not putting anything back other than what the, uh. Whether, other than what was recommended as the amount. For us to put in, you know? And that, that would be maybe an hour or two in F F C, we could present exactly how that gets done. But the reality is we are taking money out of this. And we're taking what has been advised. Also, you probably recognized in reviewing the documents that the town is partially. You know, they hold the keys to this. So if there's gonna be an adjustment at this point, they would have to. And you, you probably read Miss Hancock's email.
Yes.
So she was pretty direct about where they are right now. Uh, but we are taking from the reserve.
Okay. So we're not adding. Money back to the reserve based on what was taken out as part of our operating budget. That's what I'm getting at here.
Only way the reserve gains of money or value at this time is if the, the projection for next year. What we're gonna be putting in monthly ends up being lower than, or higher than the experience. Then money goes into the account reserve, which we've had some pretty good years. But, um, but then the warning is you can have a really bad year and this was our really bad year. Um, and sometimes it can be a couple of bad years and that's why people are squirrely. They don't know how long this, this might last or what this represents.
So that was, those are my next two questions then. Do we have stop loss coverage?
Yes.
Okay, so we have stop loss and that's the one seventy-five and that's purpling.
Yeah.
Okay. And then my other question was, you know, because this originally, when I came on the board, it was done previously. It seemed like such a huge cost savings. Are we too small of a district to be self-insured? Like to have that type of liability, like should we start looking at maybe going back to a different?
I think you benefited hugely from being self-insured. So on a, on a typical and many year basis, you have had in ass. In fact, it's offset the number of your budgets. I don't know, probably if you.
Recording stopped.
Uh-oh.
I don't.
Did you get kicked out? My screen doesn't record. Is she still on there?
There is.
I lost everybody.
So you get figured out.
Um, I can only see the owl when it's frozen.
Your computer probably crashed.
Great.
No, did you reset it? I'll give it back to you. Just, I'll try to answer it cyclically so nothing.
Well, you should have to record sometime. The meeting we're proceeding on.
No, I know, I just meant I can, I'll repeat the same general thing that.
We'll just press record on your computer.
It'll crash my computer. I have a lot of memory that I could do.
Well, can we wait to get it back on? Here's the problem. We gotta have this.
Yeah, this computer is not actually, uh, linked to this.
That's fine. Let's just get, um, her back on.
This one is gonna be that.
End up business properly.
Right.
Thank you. None.
No, that the computer in this room is that tiny little box that has probably no store.
Okay, so let's make sure that she can.
A little bitter.
Get back on and record.
Let me see if I can, um.
Yeah, no, perfect timing.
Yeah, I don't even have a recorder.
No, it's okay. We can just make sure that it's done properly.
It'll, it'll come back.
I mean, I had to be.
Yeah.
So, uh, I may be coming in a different name, but.
Quick break.
Intervention, intervention. We should have music.
Yes.
Not Jeffrey.
Oh, your, your comfort and speak cyclically was terrifying. Bless you. Thank you. So often that you admit to being willing to speak without actually inputting the input.
All right, you know what? Let me go back and try this one.
You're, you're back in.
Yeah, I'm, I'm a slower computer though. It makes me a little nervous. We can try it. Is that backup computer or backup computer? I'm already free.
Lisa, is this L view now or are you?
Yeah, I'm the cat on the cabinets.
Hey, hopefully you're gonna be okay.
Recording in progress.
He's back. And we'll just wait for all of our board members to make their way back to their cells. To make sure. We have everybody ready to go. That, so, but. We'll start back.
I think it was, it was a good question about whether we'd be better off, you know, going to the company there. That in talent, and I think when we do an F F C presentation on it, um, has benefited massively by having some self-insurance stats. In fact, we've used that in a number of budgets and so has the town. To, to try to lower from the fund that we're talking about here. So, um, you know, it's been a, a very, very profound positive. But occasionally you do have a year or two like this. Um, and so it seems like this is a tough year. Now, the fact that you can take seven hundred thousand plus from that to offset this. Shows how healthy it is. That's more than a percent. You're splitting between you and the town. But that's, that is a significant amount. Your budget would. Without something like that, you'd have a tough time in any case when you're like this. And this, this actually helps you having this, um, arrangement.
Response. Any other questions? Any other board member at this time? Yes, we're on the budget.
Just sounded like it was so soon. So I'll probably toss there. Anyway, I'll go for it. Um, so. This is probably the most difficult budget season I've dealt with since joining the board. Uh, and this is a fourth one. Um, and to be frank, you know, I'm not, I don't like any of the three proposals that we're looking at tonight. You know, I think that when it comes to crafting and adopting a budget, um, there's three things that need to be balanced, I think. Remember, one is actual budget content. Um, what are we paying for, obviously? Um, fiscal prudence and then the voices of people at referendum, which is a key point. Whatever budget we send here doesn't become law after we vote on it tonight. It still has to go through the council. It has to go to referendum. And they're much harder judges than we are here in this room. The original budget proposal, um, which is now been modified a bit, almost six percent. Is in my opinion, just not a realistic proposal. Um, I don't remember the last time the council or the people at referendum passed this almost six percent budget. And I don't feel it would be responsible for the board to send a budget along like that. On the other hand, um, what was presented last week, the three point six nine. And cut several positions that I feel we should keep and at least our initial budget proposal. Um, I agree with the emails, the many emails and the many people that spoke here that librarians are very important. Um, business teacher is very important. And I want to bring those positions to the council. We have those initial discussions. I like the number, but I don't like how it got there. Um, if we have to revisit those positions, it should be after we hear back from the residents. Um. I, out of the, out of the three budgets that we've presented with tonight, the one I feel most comfortable with would be the, the four point five eight. Um, but even then I, I still have reservations with that one. Um, although I wasn't here for the discussions last week, I do want to hear more about, um. Some of the points Ms. Griffin raised about, uh, the bacon paras, uh, the revised excess cost number. You know, Dr. Willitt and I had talked a little bit about that before. Um, I want to still hear more about it. Um, I think that, that it's, it's, it's worth at least looking at here. Um. And, uh. That's where I'll leave things off. I think, you know, if we look at that number. And I go off the four point five eight, that represents the best good faith effort. Um, while still giving, uh, the people of, of the choice regarding, regarding those positions, um, such as the librarians. And the other, other teaching positions.
Any other board members at this time?
Yeah, okay.
Yeah.
So you know, it's been a, I spent a lot of time thinking about this since the, the first. And, you know, reiterate what I kind of spoke then, you know, we came to Dr. Willitt and we told him. That, you know, it was our responsibility to provide, uh, what, what I was calling a responsible budget, something that was. Took care of the educational needs. With, without, uh, a whole lot of. Extra, a lot of, of wants i- in a time where I think. From just an individual perspective, from a town perspective, everywhere, uh, we just can handle that. Where I differ a, a bit from what Mr. Murray was saying there is I believe. That it is up to the board to figure out where those reductions go. Uh, I, I don't believe we kick a number to the council or to referendum and expect them to, to hit it back. Uh, I, at, at that point, we're forced to make reductions we weren't prepared to do. So I liked what Dr. Willitt did. Uh, where he came with, what was that number? The, the three point six? And said, this is rock bottom and here's what has to happen to retract bottom. Uh, it gave us a chance to look at it, to, to do some soul searching, to. Uh, not kidding, talk to my six-year-old and say, what is this? What is that in your school? What does that mean? And then come back and say, okay, Dr. Willitt had always said we needed rock bottom, but here are the things we just can't get rid of. Uh, and I believe or agree with what I heard, uh, Mr. Murray saying. And I think I've heard a lot of you say that the librarians is just a hill that I'm willing to fight. I think the librarians are too critical. To, to what we do. Uh, given that. And looking at this document that, that Dr. Willitt put up. You know, the three options that he puts there, keep our librarians, they, they keep the. The counselor, who I think is important as well. Um, that being said. I think option three still gives us that efficiency and puts us in a good condition. To be able to handle not just this year's budget, but next year's budget, which is going to be. Thank you.
Any other form members at this time? You know, you all want to go ahead. You could put the two in there. Um, I know last week's meeting was, it was talking and Dr. Will did. Put that spreadsheet photo us with some different numbers from his original five point and we do that. Um, all the way down to three. Point six and, um. You know, Tony said tonight and Dr. Willis said that day, this is bare bones. This is it. This is all we got. This is rock bottom. This is it. But when I looked at that document, whether it's three point six or five point nine, whatever, just under six percent, Mr. Doyle said. I had to look beyond the budget number and look at what the words on the page were. And those words, behind those words are people. And behind those people, I mean, in front of those people are our students. And removing any of those. Is concerning and detrimental to our school system. Um. I know a lot of our correspondents specifically. Spoke about, uh, librarian and media specialists. They talked about, um, the business educator. They talked about, um, the counselor, um, but behind that you have leaders in their roles. Um. Educators. Um. Leader positions and curriculum liaisons that are. A huge part of the success of our, of our school system and the success of our education system. So although those three documents are put in front of us. I can't in good conscience support something that cuts our already skeletal staff. How many, um, staff members were requested and that didn't even go into the budget? Forty-seven? Forty-six. So already, so thirty-six, so thirty-six?
Thirty-eight.
All right, my hearing is not so good. My husband is getting worse. Um. So we already are educators and our resident experts and our administrators are telling us that they needed, they needed. These positions and we already didn't put them in. So we're already at negative thirty-six, thirty-eight. And then we have this list of these potential cuts. I don't see this as wants. I see this as needs. Uh, Tony, you said needs versus wants. I, I, when this Dr. Willis says this is bare bone, this is rock bottom, this is needs. I, and it's, this isn't a frivolous, non-fiscally responsible proposal. This is a needs budget. I, you know, you see those, those kids and he said, there's what, twenty-two kids in his business pathway classroom? And there was not a chair that was empty. We lose opportunities and that, and that's just one example. It could be any of these other, other, other. Educators are in front of our students that are missing in that class, whether it be a parent, whether it be a teacher or what have you. Um. I see faces, I see educators, I see resident experts in front of our students, so. Yes, Jacob, you know, we can look at our trends of what people have approved in the past at referendum. But I don't hold a magic eight ball and I don't hold a magic eight ball that says our residents are gonna say no, we'll five point exempt. I don't hold a magic eight ball that says our residents are gonna say yes to a three, four, no. I don't hold that. But what I, what I do see is us coming out of COVID. I do see the mental. You know, mental health of our students, the reading literacy, the special. the special education programs, the business pathway programs. We have a, we had a, a parent get on the screen today, ask for gymnastics for her daughter. That's not even something that we're even talking about or even coming close to. Um, so I would be remiss to even support anything that eliminates any of these folks that are on this list. But I joked about it last week about saying if Dr. Willis said 10%, we'll be okay with the 6%. The reality of it is, is there are some people that have written in that's saying that this is a fiscally responsible budget. It's our job to be fiscally responsible, it's our job to be, you know, make sure that we do that. And I don't disagree that we need to be monetarily aware and fiscally aware, but it's our charge or my charge and what I agree to, what I signed up for was to have a strong education system for our talent, public school system, for our talent students. And we're slowly taking things away. And I don't know which parent said it, but they said 10 years ago, there was other things that were available for students and families 10 years ago that are not available for our students and families today. And we so desperately need that and I, you know, we're 2023, COVID started in 2020. Where those kindergartners that were in COVID are now in third grade? And third grade is that pivotal year, right? That pivotal year where it's either on the literacy train or you're, you struggle for the rest of your life. So I, I can't, personally, I can't get behind any of the highlights. Um, I support Dr. Wolf's original budget. Um, I support the fact that we have educators in front of our students. I understand that, you know, it's, it's tough times, but as Mr. Doyle presented, that we're not even up to what the inflation rises is. I'm not trying to increase any of these, any of them. I'm trying to make sure that we're, that we're in, under the understanding that things unfortunately have increased. And if, in order for us to fund our schools, it's not going to see the same prices of 10 years. And the reality of this is we're slowly eroding things and things that have been taken out 10 years ago, they don't just pop. That's.
Well, you already went. Go ahead.
Couple of things, I, I think Dana just hit on a key point. I think we're fundamentally disagreeing on wants versus needs. What we see as want, what you see as needs, but you know, whatever it is. And I think that step one is, I mean, my opinion from last week has not changed. Uh, I, I, I'm closer to supporting a 597 than I am before 580. Besides the duplicate para, because to my understanding, and again, I just need clarification on this, whoever Christine or Dr. Willitt, whoever invited that, it's just a literally duplicate position on, uh, on the line. Besides that, everything on this list I want to stay. I mean, we had, I mean, we had a teacher come to us today and, and ask us to support her, to support her coworkers, to support the school in which she works. Um, and thus also supporting the district as a whole. My concern is that we're not listening. And for the last, you know, I want that number to go down too, Jake. I, I, I don't, nobody wants to. As Dana said, raise anyone's anything. But in order to, unfortunately, the only way for me to get that number down, personal, is to go back 10 years and reverse some decisions I've made. And that's, that's where I sit. And so I get concerned when we start, you know, talking about again, these, these, these positions that have heads to it. And even, you know, my position on the rope position from last week is, you know, that, that, that much has changed. I mean, again, I would rather keep everything on this list except that duplicate error than, you know, eliminate positions and get down to that 4, 4, 5, 8 number. Again, that discrepancy is not big enough for me to, to be, to be swayed. And so, um, that's where I stand right now. If this discussion continues, you know, I'll have more, but, um, as of right now, again, the third time, I am closer to the 597 than I am the 505 than I am the 5458, excuse me. So, okay.
Thank you.
Oh, no, because I look at this all very differently, so I have to look at it through a numbers mind, that's what I do. So I don't see myself voting yes on any of the budgets being presented tonight. Mostly because it was never about a number for me. I don't agree with most of the proposed cuts. I definitely get a little frustrated that we didn't really look at any non-staff reductions, things that didn't affect our students. So frankly, I just don't believe that this board really did their due diligence when discussing this question. Um, I asked a lot of questions on that killer. I think probably half were probably mine. And I still have a lot of reservations about budgeting for the vacant positions for yet another year, while at the same time increasing the budget for AVIS positions and substitutes. I stated multiple times that the math does not work for me. I just don't find the support to be adequate for how our staff kind of gets moved around the district. Frankly, I can't follow it, I guess is what I'm getting at. Um, I still don't feel that we received a satisfactory answer regarding the $1.2 million in insurance. This is 3% of our proposed budget increase. I mean, if we didn't have that, we probably wouldn't even be having a lot of these discussions. Um, we got an email from the finance director and page 12 only from our consultant's presentation that was dated December of 2021. And to me, and I frankly, I feel all of you should be thinking the same, that should not be enough support for any member of this board of education to be okay with that number. And we've asked for more from each of, and I'm not sure it's not available at, at the moment, so. And I guess lastly, I'm being very honest here, I'm not sure how much confidence I have at the moment in our accounting department. We have not discussed at all during these budget discussions, the removal of the accounting assistant position. Forget the official name for it. We have not discussed at all the numerous control issues found by the auditors. So now we have a department of one that it sounds like a lot of people in this room are good with moving a 6% budget. So we have a department of one that's going to be overseeing a $44 million budget. And just honestly, I just don't feel confident in this at the moment. And I just feel again, that we really have not done our due diligence to look at non-student and non-staff reductions. So that's, that's kind of where I'm at at the moment.
Go ahead.
I, I would be interested in learning about non-student, non-staff reductions. I guess, how would we propose to, to learn about those or, or how can we get that information?
No. I've been, I have, we feel like we've been asking. I mean, I think we all asked a lot of questions in the Q and A. I don't know who asked what, but I'm sure you all did too. I mean, are we, did we ask those questions? You know, I brought up the student tech workers, I bought up, brought up the vacant paras, you know? We all didn't, you know, nobody said anything about them, so if you were against them.
Yeah, no, I do, I'm against taking anything of the vacant spots because I know that we are totally understaffed. And I know that IEPs and 504s have gone up drastically, which include a lot of one-to-one paras. So they really should be staffed. They really should be, because otherwise then we're out of compliance and then you know what happens? Then there's other issues that go with that and they hand in hand, it just becomes a big snowball.
I totally understand that.
I'm not, I don't, I'm not willing to cut that.
And that's fine, but you know, did, so we talked about staff positions that did not make it into the budget. But do we ever talk about the fact, yeah, we increased the AVIS positions from eight to 12. We didn't talk about that.
Right, but that has been talked about. We've done those things because they, they were needed for students that had, you know, had those behavioral needs. And I've said this many times, and I will say it again. We've had to transition para jobs because we do not pay the paras enough to take those jobs, so they don't take them. Right. So, and that's not a real reduction. Because if you take it and it's required by an IEP, it will go back. And then you'll be, then people will be upset because the FTE is increased next year. What that does is it sets the district up for failure. It's a easy reduction to take because you take the 238 and, you know, pat yourselves on the back, say, if you do that. And then next year we have to add them back. And that's actually, that's actually a, um, a way of making a reduction that does affect staff. That's the easy way out. Because if you do that, we're going to reduce staff next year because we're going to have to bring people on. That sets us below our capacity. We'll have to hire, it'll go against that budget next year that's already short. And it's short on quite a few lines. And then we'll be in a forced position to reduce staff next year. So it looks like it's not reducing staff, but it absolutely is. And this board, you know, has to be careful right now with the position you're in. Because you're looking at a 1.3 actual dollars thing for special ed. And you are looking at actual high numbers. It's not the time to play around with any special ed number. That is a, it would be a seriously, it would be concerning management decision. The other thing is the audit was a successful audit. There were recommendations that I cannot, I will be very happy when others just come to talk. Speaking about the audit like it was a failure or that they were major problems is reducing people's confidence in its budget process. And it's irresponsible. It may lead to budgets failing when that budget audit was not a failure by any means. And if you'd like to spend a half hour to an hour on it right now, I will do that right now. I will list all of the areas in that document where it said that there were no material weaknesses. There were a few recommendations. Like when you're driving out of a car place and they recommend synthetic is a better thing for your engine. They might recommend something you want to consider as a better process to consider. It does not mean your engine's bad. It doesn't mean that the whole thing is a failure. So representing it that way now is actually making your budget process vulnerable. Now that was provided to you back in December. A month later, allegations are made that the town manager said that he was extremely concerned. I've heard the town manager did not say those things. So I, I would, I would very much caution the hyperbolic way that we're approaching that because it's hurting your budget process. And I would be happy to spend an hour and put the document right up there, right now. And we can go through every place where they said that the budget process was successfully completed. There are three recommendations. I've put information to you on what those are. And I look forward to the opportunity to further elaborate on those. There are things that I think can be done a little better, a little differently, but they by no means represent a failure or a significant failure to do it. And by the way, not so long ago, some people were asking why we needed that additional accounting position. It was labeled as unnecessary. So, you know, I, 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 I find these kind of concerning. And it's a hit for my office. Obviously, if we are going to be struggling through some difficult budget stuff, that's a difficult, difficult hit for us to take. But that's not a teacher. Um, so you know, right now, I think we have what we need to be able to do what we need to do. We have the right people in the right places. And the way we judge that is, you know, whether we see the same outcome next year. But I, we caution us of, but talking about it like it is an absolute failure because that actually is not how that document through.
Thank you. Yeah. So I think thus far, I'm happy to hear that none of us are in favor of losing the librarian, it sounds like. Um, there's certainly a lot in the public about the importance of the roles of librarians in general. And, um, but also about each of the amazing educators. And let's be clear, they are teachers. I want to thank everyone who wrote in with their knowledge and experience, especially the students. So I think hearing that some members would support the 4.58, which would be reducing our team leads. I think we should maybe talk about some of the things that team leads do for our schools and students. Um, and I, I know I don't know all of them, but you know, team leads are managers. So how would you run a corporation with every employee reporting to a vice president or president? You know, how can our administrators work individually with seven or eight teachers in every grade level, effectively and efficiently and get things accomplished? How can you think that students need, won't get lost in that process? They are the liaisons between admins and the teams. They are the point person and admin can turn to when there are questions. They compile team needs. They, some of them meet weekly, multiple times monthly. I think they do it differently in all the schools. I know in Birch Grove, they meet weekly. Um, they, that's before school, it's after school and it's during the prep time, that is their time. They provide communication from the team to the admin to have the correct on this aligning and pacing. They organize parent conferences, team events, reunion conferences. They order supplies, they set testing schedules, they prepare grade-wide materials. They develop schedules for how they're going to prepare and give grade-wide assessments. They keep the peace. They bring the programs together. They ensure everyone is on the same page and they foster streamlined communication. They bring new teachers up to speed, often on their own time. They become advocates for them. They manage recess schedules, they cover recess and lunch duties if necessary in a pinch. They create communities within our communities. They help them become a cohesive group. We have specialized team leads, organize schedules. For the many people that are in attendance for 504s and PPT meetings, they order testing materials. They coordinate para schedules. Um, we have specials department leads who work with all disciplines and provide consistency. So I just wanted to make sure we understood some of what, and again, I think I only know some of what those roles entail. And then, I think as we've all said, we've all done a lot of reflection, I know I have this week. And I don't feel comfortable taking any of the items away that were in the original superintendent's budget. Even the earliest changes that were proposed. I don't think our students should lose the root course of TMS. I don't think they should lose the, the childcare program at the high school or athletic. I don't think we should be asking our superintendent to hopefully find a grant for a $5,600 shot clock, which is CIAC requirement. Losing our librarians would be a tragedy, losing team leads would be irresponsible. I certainly don't want our students to lose any of the teachers who hold the positions we've discussed. In fact, I want them to have more, more counselors, more electives, more opportunities, smaller class sizes. I would like to advocate for investing in our children. I believe that's my primary role here and that's why I became a board of education member. If this is about numbers, that's not what I believe my job is in this case. My role is to advocate for student needs and our superintendent's proposed budget provides that. If this is about numbers, that's up to the town manager and the town council. It's not our responsibility to tell the town how to fund their budget. I would like to challenge the town council to invest in our children. Having a fully funded excellent school system is what's best for our town. I support the 5.92% superintendent's proposed budget.
Thank you for that. And I'm going to go since everyone has gone. I have done an awful lot of reflection on this as well. There are definitely things that we didn't discuss that were from the first go around. And to be quite honest, you, you head on the GHS childcare class, the night of budgeting, when I talked to Dr. Mr. Poland. And I got to be honest, like, I'm not comfortable taking away, and I saw one of the questions, it's 44 students who take that class that will now turn into an internship versus a credit where they're no longer having a course about the children activities, they're just going into it as a job. And they're losing out on the teaching opportunities. I have a problem. Like even the interventionalist for sixth grade, that was a huge target that everyone was talking about on budget night. Interventionalists, because interventionalists helped with, you know, defer the cost for special ed. If that's what it ends up turning into, but I mean, we have to support our students. So, and that, those items aren't even on a wonderful color sheet or on anything else. That's just from the original budget that we're taking out from. So to me, I got to be honest, I got to sleep at night. And I, I thought about this and, you know, it's definitely, there's things on here that I'm like, we can discuss, we can have, but I, I'm leaning toward going to the superintendent's budget. Because those, even those items are not even in what we're talking about taking out with blue, orange, any of that. When we need to, to fund our schools, we need to have these opportunities for our students. Like I really, 44 students that go into the childcare class will no longer get that as a credit. That's a huge, huge chunk of students. Then you have, you know, the, the student with the business course. And that, that teacher is going to also teach economics. And you said it was three economics, great classes that they do. I have a problem that this is where we're. Classes that they do. I have a problem that this is where we're at with our budget is that we are going to take away courses. That students are actually interested in. And I gotta be honest, the budget night was very eye opening, sitting there talking to the, the staff. The admins, I mean, I think Mr. Poland has some great ideas of how we can create new pathways and we can do things of that nature. But at the same time, we need to have opportunities for students. And I know a lot of people, I think this, the, the conversation of needs and wants. It's a, it's a huge difference because you know what, honestly, some kids need. The athletics, that's where they're thriving, that's what they're doing. Some kids need the art, that's what they do. So you can't just sit there and say, well, here's a piece of paper and a pen. I mean, is the need a teacher? Are you gonna say you just go online and take a course? Like, that's, I have an issue with that. Like, I really feel as though. We're at a point where we have staff members, I mean, you kind of took. One of the things I was gonna say about the team leads were the teachers because they are so important in. Being a well oiled machine and having staff members go to them and talk and say, what is next? I've been the wrong parent, I've been in there subbing, I see what happens, I know we are understaffed. We were understaffed three years ago. Understaffed and I was subbed. That's why I was a subbing. And I saw, and I could pick from all kinds of different spots because we don't have people. So I gotta be honest, I'm having a very tough time saying no to a lot of this. Because I would like to see that childcare class back in there. I wanna see the interventionals in there. I want the support for our students. I, I really do. I, and I just, I don't feel like, yes, I, I mean, I know it's high, I know it is, but. It has what we need for our, our students and our staff, our admins. I can't imagine taking away those team leads, but that, what'd you say, forty eight people last meeting, I believe it was? Forty eight, we have team leads and liaisons. That you're going to now take away, like that's, to me, is just not acceptable. So that's where I'm at.
This is your budget. I'm, I'm here to advise me, I will push back if I feel like something isn't. But, you know, and I don't disagree with that. I, I, I simply think that. You know, that's there as opposed to other things, because no matter what you face, you're going to face a decision that, you know. You're gonna, you're gonna carry into next year what is in your budget. So it's, it's up to the board. I, I will try to advise against things I think aren't actually going to have the result that's not that you might think that would. But, um, no, I understand. I mean, that wasn't in the superintendent's proposed budget. You know, um.
I mean, do you, what, is it a, the cost factor of the teacher? Like.
Nobody wants to lose the liaison or, or the teacher or grade leaders or any of that. It's, it's just that that's two hundred thousand dollars. And those are four people or five people. If you are in a draconian, if you're in a Sophie's Choice position. That's, that's the choice you're making. It's, it's liaison or teacher leader, um. Grade leader adjustments that we would have to, you know, try to work through. Without them, you know, with the admin, we have to take on a lot more organizing the meetings and all of that stuff. Otherwise, if you had four or five more positions to go, who would they be? Cause if you don't like what's on the list, who do you think should go? And don't choose something that we will have to put back anywhere. Because that's not really a choice. That's, that's not really a choice. You're gonna face it next year when we, you know, that'll come back to haunt you. And as far as special ed, just look where we are. We will not make it with the reimbursement we're getting by hundreds of thousands. So don't mess with that line right now. It would not be an advice.
No, um, obviously there's more discussion to be had, so.
Just really quickly to Dr. Willis' last point, um, where we are at with specializing. I'm sure somewhere, I'm sure if you spent a few hours in the day trying to pull it, pull it all together, you could. I'd be curious to know what other towns surrounding us, what their situation they're in right now is. Because at the time of hiring, there's gonna be competition. We're not the only school district in the, in the, in the, oh, in the district. Um, but in the county, I mean, there, there, there's severe competition. I mean, there's other school districts that are paying more. Um, that have more jobs available, that are more unique to the role that they're gonna be serving. And so, um, I mean, there's a lot to consider here. So we need to. I'm not the best numbers person in this room. In fact, I'd argue I'm, I'm the least experienced with numbers in this entire room, including Jacob. I mean. How he picked it up, you know, when he, at such a young age, when he first joined the board, I applaud because. I'm not the best numbers person, but what I can tell you is, again, listening to what people need, listening to what students need, listening to what staff needs. Um, when they literally come to our meetings, when they sit on our meetings for hours of their night. I know, this is, that, that is why I, I, I cannot move off my stance that I support this five nine seven. But I just wanted to emphasize that last point Dr. Willa made because it's, it's not gonna be fixed anytime soon. But we have to, you know. Remind ourselves that there's gonna be competition when, 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 you know, labor comes back. There's gonna be like, so.
I just wanna say that I'm very appreciative of our teachers and staff. I think we have some of the best teachers out there in, in our district and I'm, as. Some of you may know or don't know, I have four children, two of them have already graduated from the district and. They've learned so much from our teachers and they've had the best of experiences. And I still have two in the district and they're, they're, it's awesome for them and I. I wish we could give our teachers more actually. And, and I wish we could give our students more. I, there's so many things that I wish we could do, like. Fund the school play, for instance. Um, I, it, it, just the thought of even taking away a pottery, uh, the kiln was so upsetting to me. Um. I, I support the superintendent's proposed budget of five point nine per- percent. Um, I think. I, I think it's what we need. I think it's what our students need. I think it's what our staff needs. And for them to be supported, I would like to even give them more if I could. Um, I understand that we're in a very delicate position because it's expensive. Nobody wants to pay for it. I wouldn't wanna pay, I don't wanna pay for it, but I mean, it is what it is. And I think our students deserve it. I think our teachers deserve it. I think our staff deserves it. And I, I'm just, I'm in support of, of, of Dr. Willis' budget. I, I don't think it's, it's. Absurd. I don't think it's extravagant. I think it's necessary.
I'll just say that I think if you go with the six, we'll just be having the same discussion in May, or I might have to cut it all anyway. Um, in fact, I'm very concerned that if we go with such a high initial offer, all you're going to do is create a lot of backlash against the Board of Ed. Which is gonna set up for a very grueling, multiple referendum budget fight. And you're gonna create a constituency of people that aren't going to settle for anything more than a zero. And I think if we go with something a little bit more reasonable. Something where I can go to the council and say, look, we took a hard look at this budget. We tried to take out everything that the superintendent recommended, except those core positions. We can, I can say, this is what it is. Yes, is it still historically high? Yes, but if you reduce it, this is what happens. Um, that's something I can defend, but I can't get behind a six or a five point nine seven.
Well, I mean, everyone has to vote how they feel, but I will tell you what. Then after being the third year of doing this, and I feel as though that even if you have something reasonable, like. We're still going to get cut down and I am not willing to lose all these things. I'm really not. Like, I really feel like we need to invest in our district and in our students. Like I, like I said. Some of these options aren't even on our colorful sheet that are going away and it's not even being talked about. Because it's just gone. They're already gone, they're already not there and. I'm still not okay with some of those. So that's where I'm from.
My, my thought hasn't changed, but I'm just going to say that if. This board is even thinking of a five nine seven. I would hope that you would at the very least then take out the duplicate para and take out the retirement differential. And at least then put back. The, um, child development class because that's almost a wash. And we know the duplicate para is a duplicate and we know that the retirement differentials are given. So that's my only suggestion from a number standpoint that I would hope. That that would happen.
Again, for that, that's, I, I.
Because that, that's putting, putting your child development back is a. That's a discussion. I mean, that, that, that goes without saying that we would take anything like that out, but your, your conversation on that would be, do you wanna put back child development? And to Mr. Mary's point. If you're putting something back now with a five, you know, with that kind of level, what, what, you know. Uh, what happens next? So it's, it's up to you as a board what you wanna do. But you're putting something back, you know, you have three options. I, I, I hate being in this position because I don't want to be in this position. There are many programs that have many more than forty four kids and there are many programs that do not have alternative methods to achieve. So again, that's not making a hard decision, that's making, you know. I understand, it's just that that program does not serve the number of kids, some of the other ones though, and it, and that program. There are alternatives.
Yeah, with that first thing, making it as, um. The students like working there as an internship, but you're missing out. I mean, I had a long discussion with Paul about that. But you're missing out still on the teaching aspects of that class. And I do think that that goes kind of hand in hand, like you should have that after. I, I understand, I understand, but I'm saying that as a board of ed, like those are things too that we should be talking about and discussing because. That is of course for. I, I mean, I know even within time, a lot of students have gone through it and have learned a lot and. It just, I feel like that's a very important class that it's.
Yeah, I mean, what you can get off your plate now, you know, and I, I work for the entire board, uh, you know, and so that means. What you can get off your plate now, you will not grapple with late. So I, I think you have some options here. You have the five, you know, nine seven that really minus, which might make that big of a difference on the percentage frankly, so. Where you're at, you know, there are options there. If you add things back, you will grapple with these exact same things soon. So where you're at, you know, depending on what level you take. You know, um, I, 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 I know that whenever you're offered anything, what you see in front of you is not what you want. But I have not heard really, other than taking things that aren't actually going, you know. When you're carrying things from one year to the other, if you're gonna face those things in the future again. So, you know, try, you, you, this budget has been brought to, to trend on just about everything. You're actually negative in some of these other areas. I am very worried about next year. So if you're gonna be doing something, you're gonna need to take something other than things that are not actual, you know. And, and again, it's more politically palatable to say you're not going to take a position, but it's not really realistic. And you are a realistic group. So, you know. The, the rhetoric around that has to end and you have to roll up your sleeves soon because. It can't be, you know, these, these products or these, these, this, these kind of red herrings of choices. It's gonna have to be the hard choices because you say you wanna make them. There they are. And if you're going down, that means curriculum liaison. So if you're actually going to, you know. If you're going with the five seven, don't add something back. Not right now, probably, you know, I would suggest. Um, we're gonna take the thing para, you know, that out, don't add anything back. And because you're going to be dealing with it later. So, you know, make some of the decisions now. Um, but, you know, I hate saying this, I hate being in this position, but I'm just telling you that the frank reality. You know, the harder decisions here are gonna be the things you don't carry from year to year. Those tend to be, you know, making some of these hard decisions. Like, uh, so I love child development. I used to be the director of a YMCA camp. I mean, I love kids, I love the programs, I love the things. That's on there because it's forty four children and because there are alternative ways of. You know, and if you, you know, some of the other things that, you know, uh, that someone may not like, there are explanations for all of them and frankly, they've been given. In fact, you've asked a number of great questions, well, on the sheets, off the sheets. The board's been very thorough. In fact, you know, you have fifty, sixty questions full of content of thoroughness, you know, of things being answered in great detail. You know, and offered to you in various sub, subcommittee settings in variety of ways. So I think you have, you, you know, you, you have gone through and understand things. So I think where you're at right now is. You know, you need to, to be looking tonight to find your path to one of the options. And then, you know, ultimately, I, I, I think that rest of the process has to play out and probably be. You know, talking about some of this again, but that's why some of those things are there. I don't want them to go either. They're not in my superintendent's proposed, you know, most of them. Um, but the stuff that is, is because, you know, there was a lot of thought put into that. A lot of meetings happened around those things with the people that. Are in, you know, in the trenches. So.
I, I just wanted to say that, um, I respectfully disagree with what you said, Jacob, about backlash. I think that we've heard a lot in the last few days and tonight from parents and students and staff. I think that we risk. The backlash of not supporting. This budget and focusing on the numbers.
It almost knocked me off of my, my, my path here to be in budget season and find myself agreeing with, with what Dr. Webber is saying over here. Normally we're arguing over, over minute details, but. You know, the, and I think there's a misinterpretation, you know, not necessarily in this room, but just in general that you can't be. Uh, mindful of costs, of dollars and advocate for education for the wellbeing of our schools. And in fact, I think the two have to go hand in hand. Uh, again, I've said it numerous times, while, while this budget is certainly concerning, this budget is certainly hard. It's next year's budget. When, when the grants start going away, then that terrifies me. And if we don't start now. Then we don't get there next year. We, we have to make even harder decisions. Um, when, when we keep talking about separating the, the needs from the wants. You know, it wasn't Tony sitting over here with a pencil saying that. A computer is a need, but this book is a, is a want. That, 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 that wasn't me that was doing that. We turned to our employee, we turned to our expert and we said. Let's start looking at these numbers, let's start figuring out what these things are. And he came to us with the stock. He came to us with a three point six nine and said, here are the, here's how low I can get it. And here's where it's gonna hurt. He looked at some of those and, and Dr. Will, that I'm just going off of what I believe you said, the first, if I, if I misrepresent, please jump in or hit me with your mouse. This one, no, it's heavier. He said that a lot of the, the ones that he picked in here, he picked because there were alternate ways of doing it. He picked some of these because they were not directly standing in front of the student. Uh, he picked some of these because they put a little bit of additional work on admin or on, uh. Some of the, the principals or aspects like that as opposed to a lot of. Yeah, a lot, a lot of additional work. Uh, as opposed to putting the additional work on, on that elementary school teacher or middle school teacher. Uh, so, so these, these options were ones that, that he brought to us. And, and so when we're looking at them and we're saying that here is where the hard decisions can be made, they're educated. When, when we're talking about, hey, if we, i- if we get rid of the liaison stipends. And we can drop that down to, with that a four, a, a four, five, eight. Then we've got a better chance of that sliding through and not having to turn back around and say, okay, we're in the shop now. Um, I agree with, I think it was Jacob, if, if not, I'm sorry, but I agree with, with what you're saying there that. Option three, the four point five goes through and says, we did what we could, we, we dropped it as low as we can without really starting to affect our, our children. And their education, hence things like the librarian's positions thing, hence the middle school, uh. Counselor, the state. Cutting those is burning a bridge, which is not one to do. But here's as low as we think we can get it. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Um, anyone else at this time? You, you already went a couple times. You did too. Go ahead.
I agree with, I mean, obviously, I would assume that. Like the duplicate para that we talked about, that goes without saying, it's obviously gonna hurt about a fair bit. So I understand that, right? So, um. Again, I, I just think that we're at the point where our, our charge is to be, to focus on what's gonna support our student staff here, our school, school district as a whole. What's gonna support our student staff and our school school district as a whole. And before I joined Board of Ed, I had a a lovely class on. Budgeting for school systems. And I'll tell you, it was. It was a lot. It was a completely different scenario than any other budgeting process that I've been involved in. I've been involved in budgeting for. Longer than I could have cared to admit that I've been in the workforce, but nevertheless, one of the big things that I took from that. Budget training session was that when we, uh. Pre-invest, pre-buy, we take something out and use grants for this and blah, blah, blah. So now you reduce your budget, let's just call it ten percent to make it easy numbers, right? You take this reoccurring thing, you pre-invest it, now all of a sudden that that item is not in that budget. And then the next year, it looks like we went up twenty percent, when in fact, we just came out flat from two years prior. So I just want us to be cognizant of that fact. Because if we continue to go down the path that we've been going down, not granted, I understand that we were doing the COVID years and we had to be creative. But the reality of it is, we can't continue to be creative. We're at fear of falls. We're at the, we're at, we're at, again, keep going back to what Dr. Willard said, rock bottom. This is it. This is this is the bottom of that. Um, although he did say that, I mean, and and Mr. Paul has spent a lot of time with Mr. Paul. Uh, going over the the high school class and the, um. The preschool thing versus F R C and what have you. And yes, our administrators, our faculty, our staff is going, or will get creative. Why force that upon them to. Have them be creative with the things that help our children flourish, not get creative, but how am I gonna teach them basics? We're taking away tools out of our teachers toolbox. And we're we're forcing them to find a different path unnecessarily. Um, we're adding additional tasks under our research, our administrators, so that. Because of things that we're cutting, I think that in in. I understand what you're saying, Jacob, when it's saying that we have a, we have a big hill to climb or a battle to backlash. But the reality of it is, again, I will go back to saying that when I signed up for Board of Ed, my charge was to fight. For our school system. And if it's a fight with the town council, if it's a fight to educate our townspeople, what our school system needs. Then if I will do my hardest to try to continue to educate the fifteen thousand people in our town. Why this is a, whether it's a six percent or a ten percent or a three percent, why this is the responsible thing to do. To support our school system, support our educators, support our staff, support our children. It's responsible. It's irresponsible to keep swinging the pendulum. It's irresponsible to do that. And I will take, like Ashley said, I had a sleep at night. I will tell you. That I'm not going to already give up the fight before we leave this boardroom and not even give my words or our words. As a board, a chance to our town council, our our words as a board, as a chance from our. From our resident expert in which he got that information from the experts in our building. I I'm not gonna not give them a fair shot to have their voice be heard to our town council and to the fifteen thousand plus residents. Period. And if we're gonna say admit defeat, I mean, I I would wanna go forward and do that. Like, it's just not okay. We need to fight for our school system. And if any time to do it, it's now. I we get, there's a lot of people in here that get passionate about a lot of things, get passionate about this. Get passionate about funding our school system. Um, and Dr. Willard, I would like to, or Ashley, I would like to put on our agenda at one point. Um, to review the audit because I read it in a very different way. When when it was sent to me, so I think that our whole team can probably, um, benefit. From a candid conversation, so I appreciate that as well.
Thank you. Um, I'm still going back on this where if we're taking away the retirement and duplicate para. And replace it because if we don't replace it with the childcare class, then you're still not accounting for that change. So you would be taking away.
You'll have by a small amount of lower. If I five, seven, five, six.
Well, I just, I'm just saying, okay, I really like her idea of taking a, taking that retirement, taking that duplicate para. Use those funds to go toward the the child.
Yeah.
So then you're still covering that class. And yes, there's, I'm sure going to be things that we're gonna have to. Have discussions about, but then you're still accounting for that change.
Yeah, you're adding child development back. Because the rest of that's already coming, when you look at parents already coming out.
Yes.
Of anything.
I don't know how the the board feels about that, but I did like that suggestion.
And you're really adding, you know, so what you're doing is you're saying, I want to add back to the highest budget option that's there, something extra.
Yeah, by taking out the other.
That's fine. And and it's fine. It's just, I want you to look.
Because if you take out the para and. The retirement, we're removing that.
You'll take those out anyway. You're adding.
That's what I'm saying. You're taking them out anyways. But then you're still accounting for the class by adding that back in for what those amounts would be.
So it's sixty thousand dollars and, you know, at some point, whether you, you know, we're gonna, so that that math is, we're taking that out anyway. So let's just leave that as it is. That would be, however, five, nine, seven gets adjusted by that amount times millions, that'll be what that is. You're talking about putting a position in that's not there in that budget. So you're you're increasing the the amount that your Board of Ed adopted budget would be. Let's just be real about what you're doing. You're increasing it. And is that what you want to do right now? Because you're going to be facing other decisions later. And, you know, those things are already coming off, you know, and part of the, what you, what this board asked me to do is more difficult than any other board had at this point. Because you wanted three almost separate options here, which we've done. But you have them now. So if you're gonna add stuff back and then just recognize. That this is coming back to you probably at some point. And and again, you're talking about the expert, like, and I hate.
But then you're still counting.
You're still, it's forty four kids, that program can be accomplished in another way. It's sixty thousand dollars. What teacher would you rather take? And I'm pushing back at you now because I want to know which teacher, because let's not talk about it in abstract terms. Who? Is that gonna be another one of the math? Will you take the lead map or the T M S counselor? And I and this is, this is tough love. This isn't like I hate you and I'm trying to break you. I'm saying, don't take, tell me who this is gonna be, because those. Those are, you know.
But see, I'm still thinking in my mind, you're taking off the duplicate para and you're taking.
But that's coming down.
Can I, can I just, since I was on, okay, so the only reason I suggested that is because you all seem very set on voting on a five point. Nine seven, a five point nine seven. Included the duplicate para and the retirement differential. That was the only reason I suggested, hold on, Dr. Willard, to swap it. Now, if you take it, if you just take out the para, the duplicate para and the retirement differential. You're probably at the five nine two, which was the original superintendent's proposed budget, but you all seemed very set. On taking a five point nine seven to vote. That was the only reason I was suggesting it. If you're going to vote on a five nine seven. I s- I think we need to reclassify those two positions, or as Dr. Willard, I think is what he's saying now is. Take up those out and vote on whatever the math comes out to be on. Without those two presentations, or these two. The duplicate para and the retirement differential.
Yeah, because of the way your budget process played out this time. You yours actually has additions, which are C L A audit items, you know, uh, degree changing. Those are things that came in after the superintendent's proposed budget happened. So those are add-ons, which is why it says plus at the top. Anything happening up there probably negates it and brings it down to where it was. If you're approving that five nine, you're approving that five nine budget. With the adjustments that are there. We're not gonna keep stuff in there that actually isn't, doesn't exist, right? That's naturally going to come out. The budget, the the board, you know, option of five oh five is actually kind of what was left with when we walked out of there. And in any normal budget year, I wouldn't even be talking about the superintendent's proposed budget. We've added some layers of ambiguity here because we're actually still talking about the superintendent's proposed budget. Most years. I come to you with your Board of Ed adopted budget, which in this case is that that five point oh five. So all of these conversations about these, you know, fairly modest amounts compared to the overall larger budget. That's gonna make that five nine seven move, you know, a little, but it's not moving much. So if you're approving that one, you're approving a five nine. With those adjustments, right? Which is naturally would be happening anyway. I'm just saying that if you're adding something back, you're putting something back in there that. The recommendation is to 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 remove, and and that doesn't exist in the five point oh five. You have a little bit harder of a task this time because normally the board would just be chewing on whatever document, like, but the five oh five would typically be all you were presented. But I tried to provide the options you asked, which is a complex task, which also meant there's gonna be some ins and outs. So that five nine would be roughly, that'll be five nine something. You're proving that five nine. With the adjustments and it'll probably come out pretty close to that anyway, right? So I'm just arguing the point that, and I don't like being in a position of doing this. This is my, this is these are the people I have to talk to. So if I'm gonna, you know, which other person will I go tell they don't have a job if it's not going to be that program? Because I know we're, we, you know, wanna say we don't wanna lose that program. So let's talk in real terms. Tell me who that's gonna be. What other will that be, you know? So i- it, that's why I, you know. I haven't heard a lot of that. And those are the actual, that is actually the position you're in. And we were in this position many years ago when I was here, and it was a pretty rough thing for that board to go through. I hope we don't relive that. Um, frankly, if we're speaking extremely frankly, when you're talking to me about insurance, you shouldn't really be talking to town. Because I don't have that control and power. So I've gone to the, I've gone to the extent that I can go with this matter. You're you're directing that in the wrong place. If that's what you think, you know, I have the authority to do. You should be now talking to the town about that. That's the next stage. I would imagine perhaps as part of that process, maybe there'd be something taken, but it will not be entirely applied towards the boards. So, you know, again, back to the reality, your decisions are hard ones and they're not gonna be made up with, you know, red herring choices. They have to be actual. And this is where we're going. That's what those are. Those aren't red herring choices. Those are things that either reduce your drag or, you know, whatever you wanna think of it. Um, you know, some of them are easy, old ball. Hey, look, you know, we can work with, you know, we'll try to work around that. Some of them are extremely hard. And I get that. But I I would suggest not adding anything back, you know, I'll do whatever you want. I mean, whatever scenario you choose, just. Adding something back feels good, but at the end of the day. You know, I don't know what that's gonna do for you. You know, it's gonna make that choice harder to do.
I just was looking at it through, if you're taking things away, if you put that back in, you're still accounting for it and it's still gonna be close to that five point nine.
And the way I look at it is you're taking those things away anyway. Those are coming out there. I'm not gonna keep that in there.
I know, I know that, but I, you're still at least covering. To put that in there. And we're still gonna have to make additional, I'm sure. But, you know, perhaps we send this and then that three percent insurance, because I mean, even if you're looking at that, then you're looking at three percent for the school, three percent for insurance. Okay, well, what the, what the town say? Okay, here's the insurance piece.
Also, one of the hardest things that can happen, and I hate, again. Um, I I don't like being in the position of saying these things, but it's my job to say these things to you. One of the worst things that can happen is for this budget and this referendum to fail multiple times. Or to activate a group that is gonna vote zero no matter what. Because there's a large, there is a significant population who will come out with a no vote. And they are a chunk of population that always has to be. Kind of, you know, you have to bring out enough people to go above that. If we go in and and we have, uh, if that happens, we will see zeros and we'll see, you know, we could potentially see failed multiple referendums. That is the, one of the most negatively impactful things that can happen to to the education system you're talking about. So, you know, I know, I I hear and I feel the energy, trust me. And I even at the meeting on February first, a lot of you were talking directly at me. With your kind of feelings about these productions and I get it. But, you know, I I, you know, I proposed to superintendent's propose for a reason. Your process is not an easy one, I grant you that. Um, but we we have to look at it from that standpoint of reducing, you know, the impact of the harm. Understanding there's going to be harm here. You know, there's gonna be impacts to this budget. Let's make it the least negatively impactful thing we can.
There's many steps for that, you know, give it to Foley, let him review it, let the town council review it. And it goes to referendum to let the town people, but I just feel like there's many local steps and I think. As our job as a board, what we're looking at, what we're trying to figure out or lay out our options. I don't think there's anything wrong going and saying. This is the superintendent's proposed budget with X, Y, Z, and we do need these things, like a lot of these, these. Topics that we're talking about, I don't wanna see leave the school. I'm really upset about the interventionalists, I like, and that aren't even on this list. So to me, by supporting that and supporting our school system, supporting our staff, supporting our our. Students, that's what we need to do. I gotta be honest, like, I just, I I don't like any of this. And of course, if it weren't for the insurance piece, we would be in a much better position, but sadly, we're not. And the cost of things go up and and there's nothing that we can do about it. At least the hand taxi and her little email. We're not touching. Now, whether between now and April, perhaps it will change. And I don't know how much of that will come back to the board to to change our percentage. But, you know, let's have that conversation of how we can support our school. That's where I'm at.
Uh, I mean, I I like the budgets better when we were talking about. Whether to add something in or not, and that was it and not what to cut. Um, I think like the rest of us, but. I'll just go back to my my earlier point, you know. My idea wasn't not to fight at all. The point is, is that if we send, sending a budget that is just D O A. Because it's almost six percent, it's just not even a smart strategy, am I? You know, you can disagree with it, but like, I think, like Dr. Willard said, you are going to. Ignite the anger of a large group of people in town and you are going to set up this, uh, a, uh. A chain of events which could very likely lead to multiple referendums and a worse outcome for the district. Um, and I think it's prudent of us to look at this list. Try to do what we can now to come with an offer that can at least be considered. And, you know, just notes up on the insurance, you know, to say, I appreciate, uh, you know, Dr. Willard, he giving me the time to talk on the phone about that issue. Called you a couple of times about it, passed some good conversations about it. I think it's something that we need to continue to discuss at our joint meeting, you know, uh, my my favorite meeting of the year. Um, uh, it's not my favorite meeting of the year. Um, no, but. Uh, unless there's like. Ever, following back up, if if we have some progress on that, I I'm absolutely wanna look at this list and see if there's. It's reasonable to add add some things back in, but. You know, unless there's like a million dollars that Dr. Willis is not telling us about. Um, I I just don't. It's it's a rough situation to begin. I I'm just trying to to look at this with as level of the head as I can, so. People can have a different, different, uh, idea of what that means, but, um, that's where I'm at with this.
Um, I just also wanna say, um. That I've been going through the town stuff and trying to gain more information about E chip and. Yes, I will absolutely be bringing this up at the joint meeting and trying to figure out, still. Confused about reserves, not reserves, but, you know, about, you know, perhaps getting the town to consider. Taking on some of this, if it is in fact making up for reserves or whatever, but I just wanted to let you all know that, um. That is definitely on, first on my list at the joint meeting.
It it is a complex kind of matter, so I have, as Mr. Murray said, I'm willing to talk to any of you about it. It does require some time. It's not a very quick thing. There's a lot to talk about with respect to it. So I'm happy to talk at great detail with any of you anytime about anything like that. You know, in depth. Um, but the thing that is, you know, that you that you need to consider no matter what. Is that the 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 town is the authority on what ultimately is going to happen. So, you know, I cannot do that. But there's, I'm happy always to go into any topic in great depth with any of you.
This, this is probably my last point, um. I feel like we're back to the what at the age and. That concerns me again. Uh, if it takes. The budget getting voted down, I I during referendum, I mean. That's where I'm, that's, I'm, okay, okay. I I can say from a personal standpoint, I supported a budget that I truly believed could support our education system. If it gets voted down, it gets voted down. The point is, I think, though, to let the process play out. I mean, and this is, this is, this is about procedure. This is about process. This is about what steps fall after the other. And, um, I'm willing to follow those steps and I I I. I think it'd be wise if we trusted our, finally trusted our superintendent, um, and the budget he proposed. Um, and the staff that wrote in, the parents that wrote in, the students that wrote in and came in, um. I just, I think we're talking in circles and playing what if games and. I think we let the process play out as it needs to play. That's just where I stand. Thank you.
Um, I have a point that came up a while ago. Tony mentioned the, um. Removing the teacher stipends for the team leads. Just wanted to make sure everybody's aware. We go back in contract negotiations with teachers this year. So, as I explained, a lot of this stuff happens on their personal side. You know, as Christina mentioned with the lunch mandate, the reason why we can't just extend school five minutes is because we have to do that in contract negotiations and pay teachers for their time. So I think if we're gonna be increasing their job responsibilities or asking. Teachers, some, all to give up more time, that's gonna, that's gonna come back around in contract negotiations this year. And also, you know, back to the point I made last week, these are some of our most experienced best teachers who hold these positions. Now we're gonna take away. Some of their pay as well. Was to say they're gonna stay here. So then the other thing I'm confused on is I don't understand why we're. Saying that this budget is D O A. Who are we to say that it's D O A? Who are we to say that? I may be naive here, but just because we have an increased budget, does that, that doesn't dictate an increase in our mill rate? We don't know any of that yet. I think we need to let the town decide what to do with the town funds. And we need to advocate for our needs.
I, I like a couple of the things that, that Jayden said, just a couple of minutes ago and then. Again, uh, you mentioned, you know, we're, we're going into interpretations. Uh, how one person sees things versus, you know, another person sees things, you know, we're, we're on the same page. I love the process. I'm a big fan of letting the process play itself out. I think we, as the people in this room, as this board, have a role in that process before we. Take what is the superintendent's proposed budget. And send it to the town council and change its name. We, we make it the Board of Education budget. In doing so. We've gone through and we've said it aligns with our. Our goals, it aligns with our priorities and it is. What we feel we need, use that word again. To maintain or to increase the quality of education here. We've turned to our superintendent and we've said. You know, cut the extra. Cut even what may not feel like extra. How low can we go without really starting to affect things? And, and he came up with this. You know, we, we spent all that time on the first and we talked, we came up with the different options and we came up with those, those three strata. And ask him to put together these, this budget based on those strata. The one option three. In this case, uh, which is, is the, the one I've said I prefer. Is the one that our superintendent said he could make things work. Is there pain? Yes. There's gonna be pain with any of it. There's gonna be pain if we take out the extra pair of condition and then put in the, uh. The childhood development class. Uh, but this way, he can do so without having to cut. Too many heads. Uh, we're talking about removing some of this liaison position and then do I recognize? Mr. Charlie Chan, like you said, do I recognize it's taking money from people? I absolutely do. But much like our superintendent said on the first. Taking this away from them, if it prevents us from having to cut. People and send them home. You know, that, that's prepared. That there's a plus to that. So, so I think, Jayden, you're right. You know, we've got to listen to our expert. We've gotta let the process go forward. But where I differ is I think doing those responsibly leads us to the lowest and most efficient budget we can. It leads us to the four, five, four and five and not the four nine seven or adding things back. That aren't even. Sure, I, I can't remember who said it. Somebody, I mean that genuinely. Um, in this room, one of my first meetings on the, I remember the phrase, efficient, most efficient is always, not always the best solution. And in whatever, um, scenario that plays out. I think the quote, again, Tony, just to sort of harp off what you just said, make things work on our part. I- in my opinion is lazy and on, on, on the staff, it's more work. And so I am just personally not okay with putting that on people who are already doing so much. Um, while we sort of just accept the, you know, lower numbers, the lower number. I, I, I'm just not. I'm not a work at that. And so that's, that's why I stand where I stand and that's, you know. Sort of the reasoning. I, I just, I just don't think it's, it's, it's fair to people who are not in control of this decision. And that's the people who work in our buildings. And so that's, I just wanted to clarify, um, that, but I appreciate, I do appreciate what you're saying.
Well, I'll follow up with that too, because to make it work is not always the best efficient. I mean, I was gonna say pretty much similar to what you were saying. And I mean, the budget he provided, I mean, we've gone through and we've done light items, blind items. I mean, this is where we're at right now. And I'm not comfortable with that. And so to me, what he had proposed, even that I'm still not comfortable with because. It does take out the interventionalist. It does take out the childcare class. I still didn't like that, that it's not in here. So. You know, to make it work, when it comes to educational system, it's not always the best answer and response to make it work because. Making it work is not always. Going to get you to that next level and be successful. It just gets you by, slide by. You should look and. Wanna reach for stars, wanna go further. Just getting by is like stagnant. Why would you wanna an educational system to be stagnant? Like, that's me. I just, I don't appreciate.
And it makes sense what you're saying and, and no one wants to get rid of interventionalists and a hundred percent. I understand that, nor do I. So this is not directed in, in, to be in contrast to what you're saying, but I'll explain why I did that. Cause that's what you look for is justification. Here's the why. You know, in a prior reduction, we were left with an offset of, you know, a ninth person on the team. That ninth person was made into an intervention position. That has been helpful. However, we have other teachers we can train on co-teaching to facilitate the co-teaching piece of that. And the class sizes of T M S are much smaller than K five. So that also that position as a reduction can go into a, a retirement. So we're not actually. Someone's not actually losing their livelihood in that scenario. There are other scenarios where people will lose their livelihood and I can't control that completely. But where I can, I'm trying to make sure a person doesn't lose their livelihood. We have people that can take the co-teaching piece of that, that person was doing and, you know. Um, that school has much lower class sizes than a K five referendum. So if you had to, again, it's a Sophie's Choice situation. If I had to, then that's better than taking intervention people. Uh, in other schools, cause the K five people cannot, under any circumstances, lose any interventions, right? K five cannot lose interventionist. It also cannot lose reading, cannot lose math, has the highest class sizes in the entire district. You know, that's the kind of thing. So it's not against what you're saying. It's just, I'm trying to give you, you know, and again, I'm, I'm gently. Saying this is kind of why, this is why, you know, avoiding lost livelihood. We can make adjustments. Certain other places much more difficult to do that. You know?
No, and I believe that it was on the budget document as well. And I get it. I just know that interventionalist, that piece of the puzzle is intricate. So, you know, I understand what you're doing. I get it, but. These are still things that were, we don't have that. It's still a topic.
And I'm speaking to the, the collective group, not to you directly, but to collect. This is why. Yeah, this is why that.
Any other board members? Yeah.
Um, so just, just said Jayden's earlier point about affecting the process, wanting it to play out. You know, I, I get that, but I will just say that. We really haven't. Lived through a situation where we've had to go referendum over referendum and it's, there's. Costs to that. And I'm not talking dollar costs, but in terms of planning for the next fiscal year. Um, for, for the, you know, the, the headache on our staff, um, associated with that and the town staff as well. It's not. Great for a budget to, for us to not know what our budget is until June twentieth is, is not ideal. So I, I just wanna point that out. Um, also, you know, um. I might just suggest kindly, Madam Chair, you know, um, I, I think we've done a lot of talking here. I don't know if we've moved any, the needle much and we might wanna consider. Uh, moving this to action.
Yes, I will entertain that motion if you would. So make that for the L one.
Yeah, uh. Jake and Mari, I move to move the superintendent's, uh, budget to become the Board of Ed's adopted budget. Item, uh, I two to item L one for action. Jane Ridge for an old second.
Okay, any further discussion with that? Yeah.
Just question Jake. So on your motion, are you moving? The superintendent's proposed budget to action or the options?
I didn't want to confuse anybody.
Though I, I do have an option for you if you wanna retract it, you know, listening to the various things that you've said. You know, motion to adopt superintendent's proposed budget as the Board of Education adopted budget with the reduction of sixty five, five eighty, the duplicate pair of retirement differential. That's one option. And then you can add to that if you want. And the addition of the child development program. So these would be.
So I took what he said as moving the options into.
That's the five and seven.
Yeah, yeah.
Options one, two, three. Yeah, that's what, that's.
I, I think it might be better if I retract it, cause I think you misunderstood what I was trying to say. Yeah, I, I, yeah, um, I, I'm gonna retract it. I can say that. Preferable. So I retract my motion.
Okay, um, seconded, yeah, all in favor can say aye. I'm gonna retract it. There we go.
We need, you know, the other options are straightforward. Like if we were to adopt the five point O five, that's a motion to adopt five point five. But if you're going to make the adjustments you were talking about. To that, as it exists, five nine seven, that's how you could do it. Motion to adopt super proposed budget. You know, as the Board of Education adopted budget with the adjustment slash reduction of sixty five, five eighty. The duplicate pair and the retirement differential. That does what you had talked about. And then if you're adding back or adding in child development, that extra line could be part of your motion. And that's what I heard you talking. If that's what you wanna do. Otherwise, you're going for the five O five straight. Or you could instruct me to go to the four five eight, which is. You know, adoption of the five O five minus the trickle mayons, you know, great leaders, team leaders, and now bring it to the four five eight.
So I won't have to say this much. If we go for the addition of the child development program, I'm not taking another teacher off. I'm just taking those other parts off. She said, and adding that in as a replacement for that fund.
Right, so it's just adding that back.
To make that clear, cause I know you're asking who I'm taking on the chopping block to add this program back, but that's not in my mind what's happening. My, my, you're taking out that.
I get it. I think it has sixty thousand. Where do you want me to go with that? But, but I get it. Trust me, it might, you know, I get it. I, I get it. I'm the one who has to tell these people. I have to do the communicating. So I get, but I, I'm trying to listen to what you're saying. That motion is the one you talked about with respect to the superintendent and adding child development. You wanna do another one O, I can adjust accordingly.
Tony, and then. Go ahead.
I was actually gonna make a motion.
Okay, well, you're gonna wait then.
I was gonna ask what I need to say to make that one.
Okay, um. So let's go ahead and make that. Whoever would like to make that motion.
Well, I have a point of order because I think we have this weird, um, thing where it's in the superintendent's report and we moved.
We have to move it to L one. So, that's just the first thing.
Yeah.
To move that to action, but then we have to know what we're. That's why I thought we're moving off three options then, because we're moving in.
Cause this, this is what I assumed was what would be moving to action, which is a five O five. So if you wanted to raise it or lower it, you'd have to do that for action. Is that, is that a wrong?
You could move, oh, option three to board action, or option one to board action. You could pick.
I thought we could just move all three and vote on them.
Or just move the budget to board action.
That's what I.
That's basically it. It's not.
That's what I thought, uh, L one, we're doing, just a budget vote. Not that hard, three options.
You gotta, so, yeah, I'll just make a general motion. To move, uh, the budget, item I two to item L one under board action.
Okay. A little further discussion on moving the item to action. They all in favor can say aye. And that was everyone. So we're moving that to L one for budget vote. Okay, um, let's move on to committee and liaison reports, um. I don't think there was any movement per se of last two weeks or anything. Um, if so, please, June speaks now, cause I don't believe there is anything scheduled. Uh, Chairperson's report, um, I will just put this on here. Um, budget transparency, questions and answers. The budget process is built on these words. Our mission is to advocate for students, staff and families. The main control that we have as a board is setting our budget to ensure an educational system for all students. I never ran to have my decisions dictated by a political party. I intend to find a balance in the budget. What one person may think or wants items may actually be a neat item for other students. I have been in our schools as room parent, volunteer and substitute. I know there are many restraints due to budget constraints. During our budget meeting with administrators, one said, and forgive me if I'm saying this wrong. But when there are budget cuts, those become missed opportunities for students. Here we are. I will fully support our schools and budget. My reasons for supporting the budget are a junior, a sixth grader, and one that hasn't even started our educational system. As well as my responsibilities as an elected official to look out for all the students in our district. Just leaving it at that. Okay. And board action for L one. So I would like that motion, if you can put that. Up on the screen.
I would like to make a motion to adapt the superintendent proposed budget as the Board of Education adopted budget. With the reduction of sixty five thousand, five hundred and eighty dollars, duplicate pair and retirement differential, and the addition of the child development program.
Seconded.
Any further discussion on that? And I will just do a roll, I'll roll on this, then be easier. Okay.
Aye. Nay.
Nay.
Aye. Aye.
Nay.
I'm a I as well. Um, therefore, I do support this budget. With the reduction, but then adding into the child development program to go to the town council to find out. Okay, at this time, uh, public participation, um, but we have viewers at home and, and our room, so I will do the same thing. Um, at this time, if you could, please raise your hand if you're online or you can come up, um, to our wonderful owl here. We will go back and forth. If you could please list your name and your address for the record. And then we will go from there as long as you can get your timer up.
Yeah, true. Yes, it's behind Jacob's head.
I see a hand here, so we will go to Kate. Uh, Kate, can you just wait one moment just to make sure that we have our timer situated? We're good? Okay, Kate, go ahead.
Hi, everybody. Kate Howard Bender. Can you hear me? Okay, um, I wanna thank you, the five of you who support, who are brave enough to support our kids. Uh, playing politics and worrying about backlash is not within the ten to twenty code for B O E members. Blaming Walt for presenting the options after asking for the options is disingenuous and an old tired word trick. The can kicking, which started in twenty sixteen seventeen, has caught up to us. All efficiencies have been sussed out. It's time for each and every one of you Board of Ed members who were elected to these positions to have some political and personal fortitude. To advocate to the T C and to the residents, that this is what we need as a community. To heal from the last seven years of reductions, cuts and institutional loss. The cows have been weighed, the pencils have been counted, the sausage has been made, the audits have been conducted and our kids and our community need each one of you. Each one of you to buck up and do your jobs to support the budget. Getting by is what our staff have been doing since twenty sixteen. It's not good enough, friends. It's not good enough. Public education is our collective commitment to ensure democracy and literate citizens free that can think for themselves and make this country great. Thank you all for doing your due diligence to support our town and our kids. Be well, take care of yourselves.
Okay, thank you, Kate. Um, the hour. You can come up, sir. Just state your name and address and Dr. Will will start the talk for you.
Henry Fang, one forty five, slave.
Henry Fane, one forty-five Slater Road. I'm a retired teacher, I was in the district for twenty-three years. I do know that, um, the teachers in this district. Having faced cuts over the years are, um. Have had a rough time and, um, sort of, some of them are sort of at the end of their wits, basically. I know some, uh, television programs are highlighting stress among teachers. Um, across the state. Um, yes, things can be worked out. Uh, if certain things are cut, that's gonna put more stress on teachers. And that's going to, I think you're gonna get more people leaving. Um, I don't believe. That you should, I, I think. If you believe that the, uh, five point nine seven is what needs to be done. Yet you need to stand behind that. I don't think that you need to. You shouldn't worry about the process and possibly multiple referendums. We haven't had multiple referendums for a number of years. And if you start out too low and it goes through that process. You're gonna be cutting from a position of weakness. Well, that's my perspective and, and what it comes out to, where I look at over the last. Five, eight years. The most my taxes have gone up is six hundred dollars a year over that period. Um, I also think you need to, um, do a better job of selling budget.
At this time, if there are further, um, internets, if you could please raise your hand and I will call on you. If not, I will go into our room. That was Kate, she had a comment.
How do I raise my hand?
Okay, well, Jody. You're ready to go.
I'm sorry. I had to update my Zoom, I'm sorry, and I'm not familiar with the new thing. Um, I can put my camera on. Um, I just had a question, actually. It seems like the insurance cost is like a very big ticket item. Was it ever approached to town council? That they combine the insurance that the town has and the Board of Ed and just propose it as like a town insurance policy? And break up the departments like internally or something? Cause wouldn't it be less expensive if there was more people on it?
Uh, we have discussion after, so you have two minutes, um, you have.
I get to keep talking, oh, I'm sorry. And also, I noticed, um, on the, um, my name is Jody Coleman Marziale, I've been a para. With the Board of Education, I've worked in every single school now in our district. I'm currently at the high school. Um, assisting with geometry and, um, the business class. And, um, the tech, intro to tech. And also I was in the childhood development class, which my daughter attended for two years. And Mrs. Elliott actually wrote her a beautiful letter of recommendation when she went into college, because she wants to go into, uh, supporting children as well. And, um, I did notice, I, I'm in favor of the, leaving the childhood development class also. Um, also, don't the parents pay for their students to go to that class? So I didn't see anything in the budget offsetting what the parent pay to enroll their children into the daycare. As opposed to what it costs for the teacher and the students to, the forty-four students to attend those two classes. I would think that that would offset something. And then also I did notice that on the para line. It looks like we're, you've slated only a three thousand dollar increase from twenty-three to twenty-four. I'm a little concerned with that, seeing as I just got a five hundred dollar electric bill. So I'm hoping that's not a real number and you're missing a couple zeros maybe. I'm just asking.
Thank you. Uh, thank you, Jody, can you just give your address for the record, please?
Seventy-nine Talon Green.
Okay, thank you very much, Jody.
Thank you.
Anyone in the room, come on up. And you will have to state your name now.
Patrick Doyle, A Lakeview Drive Extension. I don't envy any of you. Um, many of you, I agree with many of you, I don't, but I am grateful for each and every one of you and the discussion. That you've been engaging in. Um, I want to remind everyone that a budget is a plan and not a number. And as this goes forward, I encourage you to talk about it as that way. I have a concern that we're down to. Being mechanics, asking the customer, which piece of the engine would you like to go with that? And that's a scary place to be. And I think some strain that has come up reflects that. I don't know enough about the insurance question. To make a strong recommendation, however, it sounds to me like there was an anomaly in terms of. The insurance history and uses that's caused this spike. If that's the case, and it truly is an anomaly. It might be worth exploring as you continue to partner with the town council through the next stage of this budget. Whether or not a use of excess funds, rainy day funds, emergency funds. Might help to either replenish the reserve that may need to be replaced. Or to, um, offset what that increase might be. I recommend that you speak to the superintendent about the ins and outs of that, as to whether that, they're not, that is. Reasonable and that is a fair characterization of that insurance piece, but I do think it's worth exploring. And a good way for you all to continue to stay positively engaged through the continuing process. So that you can be a partner with the town council, remain strong and advocating for the needs of the school district. But also show that partnership on behalf of taxpayers. Thank you.
At this time, if you are on the internet, if you can, please raise your hand or. As Jody had done, just saying, I don't know how to raise my hand, but I want to have something to say, that's fine too, cause your box lights up on my computer. So at this time, um, anyone, um. Yep, okay. If you would like to speak. Yeah. Okay, then, at this point, um, I will close up the points, uh, public participation and we can go to points of information. Everyone's already looking for adjournments, um.
I just want to take this moment and thank everybody for the conversation. Whether you voted the way I did or not, uh, I think we had some good conversations. I think we talked, we talked over some logical points. Personally, I, I think we, our vote did a disservice. And what we're going to do is be having these conversations in the very near future, but. The one silver lining is I think we've proven capable of having those conversations without dropping into the narrative. Thank you.
Do you want to, um, say anything about the insurance with the town policy? Because I don't think people quite understand how the E chip actually.
It is both town and board in together. And we do do that exact thing. You get the benefit of the size of both of your population. So that, that is actually what is happening. Frankly, it's, uh, you, you had a terrible year. But because it's so well managed, you were able to take seven hundred thousand dollars out of this thing. And offset your impact. You can't do that for three years. When you do eventually talk to the town about this, you know, there's. I would imagine at some point in the process, there will be perhaps potentially some discussion on additional movement on the town side. However, um, and that's just a conjecture, could be completely wrong. However, um. You can't take this amount of money from this. Multiple years, that's why you're seeing so much concern here with taking any more. If you had another year like this and you took another chunk like this. That, that is starting to run this, this thing into the ground and this is already, this has been managed extremely well. And you have, you know, the ability to do that because of it. So you, you're, you're much better off for the insurance structure you have. And I think, you know, over time, you can do presentations on that to illustrate that. But you can't play, you know, they're, they're gonna be reluctant to make big changes, take big amounts. Because what if you have another year like this next year will be the fear. And you're, you're, you know, your experience trended slightly better. The, the month following when this decision was made, but not so much that anybody's cheering and waving flags, it's. I, I wouldn't look at that number and say, yeah, we're out of the woods. And that's why I don't think this hand card is looking at that number, saying you're out of the woods. Cause it's definitely not the case. But that's where, that's why it is where it is. You have a very good program. Um, and it is offsetting a tremendous amount of your, your impact.
Any other board members with a point of information? Um, I just wanted to say to, I think, everyone's points tonight. Uh, next to everyone listening, the next stop on this budget train is town manager. And after that, the town council. So support the budget. If you don't support the budget, please reach out to them next.
Well, I will entertain the motion for.
Did, did you officially, did you move the budget to action? Did you actually?
Motion, Mr. Dern, nine forty-eight P M.
All in favor? Perfect, we will adjourn at nine forty-eight.